Councilmember Norton?
Here.
Councilmember Harland?
Here.
Councilmember Tran?
Here.
Councilmember Termini?
Here.
Mayor Bator?
Here. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Okay, we are excited and fortunate to have the New Brighton Middle School here to give us a presentation with this lovely art that's been hanging in our chambers for quite a while, so thank you for coming. And Larry, you're gonna make that presentation?
Well, I would definitely, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'd like to introduce. So, we talked last meeting, we have some wonderful student-made art both here as well as in the police lobby. And so, we'd like to have Roy Segura, the art teacher, as well as hopefully we can get some of his students to come up here. That would be great. I would like to have, maybe Mr. Segura could come describe what the type of art that his students have done.
First of all, thank you for allowing us to hang the work up here, also in the police department. I know we've been doing it for a while, but having this room is a little bit gives us a little room. As a matter of fact, they'd like to get more room if possible. But anyway, the drawings you guys are looking at are, or that you've seen, are still life drawings, and these students have been with me sixth grade, which was a quarter of a year, and then now I've had them for another quarter of a year. So, I mean, quite a bit of talent out there, there's still lives of renderings, and they actually have the pieces in front of them, and they're actually looking at them and drawing them. So, it's out of a picture and so forth, so, you know, we teach a lot of different things about keying in work, about renditions, about overlapping space and so forth, so, but I think it's been wonderful work that we've been doing for quite some time there, so, and we really appreciate that you guys have given us the opportunity to hang up the work, like I said before.
Bring them up and introduce them to us, we'd like to know who they are. Yeah, and you can claim your artwork if it's hanging.
Hello, my name is Asher Milliken. I'm in seventh grade in New Brighton Middle School, and my artwork is right down the back with the hole puncher and the art brush.
Great, thank you, great job.
Hi, my name is Gavin Gasparotti, and my artwork is also in the back, and mine's one on the left with it seems to be like a face, like if you look at it closely.
Very creative, great.
I'm Leah.
Sorry.
I'm Leah, and my artwork is in the back on the top right.
Excellent.
My name's Erin Schumacher, and my artwork's over there in the bottom left.
Thank you.
My name is Kayla Young, and my artwork is in the bottom right, the hammer in the nail, and I'm in eighth grade and I go to New Brighton Middle School.
Thank you.
My name's Maddie, and my artwork is over there on the top right corner.
And just to let you guys know, I had probably about another 50 pieces of work we could've put up, so, that's what I was saying, yeah. Whenever you guys are ready, a little hanging up and we can do it, you know, so, really appreciate it. Also, the work at the police department shows watercoats skills that the kids have been doing awesome, and so I hope people got a chance to look at those also, because they're really pretty nice paintings. And we just did the plein air, right, and I kinda helped out a little bit on that one, but, you know, it just starts them out in middle school that way, and it's kind of amazing they're in seventh and eighth grade, so.
Very talented, very talented students, thank you so much for doing it.
Thank you.
Quick question.
I have a question. I hear so often that many programs in school are cut out, and a lot of times it's art, things that somehow we don't appreciate. Would you tell us a little bit, while you can, why art is so important for children in development?
You know, we have a new superintendent who kinda, he wrote an article about that, the Capitol, so he had a chance, but it has to do more with technology and hands-on art right now, because we're pushing so much for the technology part, and he discusses, and we've both discussed about how, you know, kids are kinda losing some basic skills, that we have been able to look at things and analyze things, and how art makes you think a lot more than just, you know, you can think about certain things on the computer, but actually manipulating them with your hands, you know, adding layers and so forth, it helps develop other skills that we need for everything, other kind of job that way, so.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. I might also add that an important fact that you could carry with you is, and from doing my work at the Museum of Art and History, we have found that there has never been a single Nobel Prize laureate that did not have something to say about an art element in their education. It was pivotal to all of those great thinkers, so something to think about.
One last thing, we had, I went to a seminar this summer, and one of them was, they had Google and Apple both there, and saying, everything we have now is about art, the computers you have in front of you, they're all designed around some sort of art talent that way, so, it's not just technology, everything basically, engineering and so forth.
And your students have outclassed every, I know for a fact, all the abilities in regard to art that the entire council collectively have, has been, okay.
Thank you.
You know, thank you very much for sharing, we appreciate it.
Thanks.
A more round of applause for the guy. Okay, that will take us to a report on closed session, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Three items on this evening's closed session. The first involving real property negotiations, council received a report from its negotiator, the city manager, concerning the property at 2091 Worf Road. The second item was a conference with legal counsel involving pending litigation. The city council received a report from the city attorney's office on one item of pending litigation, the matter of City of Capitola versus Water Rock Construction, Inc. Last item on the agenda was a public employee performance evaluation concerning the city manager position, and there was no reportable action on any of those items.
Thank you. And Sue, do we have any additional materials tonight?
Yes, we have two. One is for item 8H regarding the admin policy establishing standards for installation of the blue curb parking spaces, and item 9B regarding appointing Noel and Tam architects for the Capitol branch library. Thank you.
And I'll add that I also handed out a sheet that you should have in front of you regarding some architectural costs on other library projects that we'll be talking about under that item.
Okay, great. Thank you, Steve. Okay, Mr. City Manager, any additions or deletions to the agenda? Staff has no changes. Okay, this is the part of the meeting where for public comments, this is where we open it up for the public, anyone is allowed to come and speak to us for three minutes about any topic that is not on the agenda, so please come in and tell us your name if you'd like us to put it in the record, and tell us what you want to tell us.
Hi, my name is Hank Ryan, and I have been, had a home here in Capitola for about 10 years. My wife and I, we talk about art, we love to walk around here, and it's beautiful. We also, one of our roots takes us through Perry Park and over the bridge. A couple days ago, we walked through there, and oh my gosh, we saw these posters on the trees, and we went over to look at them. I couldn't read the writing very well, but, oop, wait a minute, these trees are gonna be taken out. And as we went along, more and more of these trees were posted, some that were very beautiful, but all of which made that park a park, all the trees along the riverfront, that small area. I decided to stop by here just to see what, why all those were being taken out, maybe a second look to see if any of them could be saved. Turned out, many were just gonna be pruned, we didn't know that. But in the process of doing that, and standing up in the planning department, or talking to planning folks, I found out that if you want to make an appeal, which was invited, a citizen has to pay $500 to appeal something like that, to appeal whether or not those trees should be taken out. It's a lot of money. In fact, I would think that any money for citizens to speak that hope to benefit their community with no possible profit motive would not be the case. Now, you must have your reasons, and I'm here simply to ask you to perhaps take a second look at that, in that, had Stephanie not happened to be in the building the same as I, and suggested she could do it without cost to make an appeal, I don't know, I just would have been stunned, that here we have a situation where the city is embarking on something that is material to the community significantly, and for anyone to speak up officially about it, to just even to take a second look, would have to put out $500 of their own money. That to me is absolutely crazy. Again, I don't know all the reasons, I only ask that you might take a look at it in the future, and I appreciate the time.
Yeah, we're gonna get some clarification on that, but I'm glad that you took advantage of the opportunity to come here and talk to us, because there is, this is your public right to come and talk at this session.
Yeah, I don't pay for this.
No, you didn't have to pay for it, and you know, the reason that we have this part, and we begin every meeting with it, is that so, if there is something that's unclear, it can be made aware of, and then we can take action on it. I'm not gonna elaborate on it, I'll let our city manager take this question, but I know that there's lots of appeals that happen that do consume staff time.
I bet.
And there's a process, but in this case, I'm gonna defer this to the city manager, and he may defer to Public Works to give you an answer to what's going on in Perry Park, and I appreciate you coming here and sharing that with us.
I believe after the discussions that went back and forth with the intern for the planning folks, that ultimately the fact that the trees that we were most concerned about, virtually most, all of them are gonna be pruned, so that means they're still there. That issue, I think, is probably put to bed, and I've asked the appeal be pulled back. I don't want to consume staff time. Obviously, my other question has to do with the basic issue of having to pay to make an appeal to begin with, and that's, that's a discussion I can't make with you, because I've not.
We're gonna take a couple minutes right now and try to explain that to you, okay? So, let's see if we can get someone to give you an answer that makes you go home feeling good about it. Mr. Community Development Director, are you gonna field these questions?
Mr. Mayor, good evening, sir. Yes, the trees that the gentleman's referring to are part of PG&E's Community Pipeline Safety Initiative, as you recall, where they're removing or modifying a number of trees and structures throughout the city which run along their easement for their high-pressure natural gas underground pipeline. I think there's three trees in that general area that are gonna be removed, and the speakers crack, most of them are pruning and trimming. I could be wrong, so don't hold me to the three, but I believe it's three of them. And those trees are either over the easement, or they have a potential to cause root intrusion, or prevent emergency access to PG&E, so that's why they'd like to remove them. The appeal fee, you know, it's in the adopted fee schedule that the council puts forth, any type of permit that you want, a citizen wants to appeal does require the $500 fee.
Isn't the $500 fee more for a citizen appealing a planning commission decision?
I know, that's, that's the same fee, whether it be a staff decision or a planning commission decision.
And with regard to city, this is not a city project, this is a PG&E project that had been mandated, we didn't have a lot of say in this, did we?
No, we didn't, you know, to their credit, PG&E has kind of worked with the city, you know, paid the fees, gone through the permitting process, but I think it's their belief that they have the right to remove these trees, should they want to, you know, just go ahead and do it, but they've been very cooperative with the city.
Do they fall under the same two-for-one replacement when they take out trees, the concrete area that we have?
They do, so the ones that are within the Rispin Conservation Area, those are gonna be placed at three-to-one. The other trees that are within city areas are be replaced at two-to-one.
The three trees I think you're speaking of are pretty large, and on sort of the junction between the park and the street, replacing those two-to-one, I don't think would be even practical, they're very nice. I hope maybe they take a second look at that, but that's, again, not why I'm here. It's the basis for citizens trying to act responsibly and respond to issues in the community, essentially having a toll to pay that most people couldn't afford. And so, I just think perhaps there are tiers of involvement that would be less costly, or not costly, that would still trigger some sort of response, some sort of engagement, small community, small town.
Do you feel like you've triggered a response by coming here tonight, is that?
I guess we'll see. The explanation of the fee was pretty dry and straightforward, but that doesn't really go to my question. It is there, it is that much, that's been decided.
Right.
Whether that's the right thing to do, or whether it can be done in a different way, I can only suggest that it may be worth a second look.
Thanks.
Are you happy to look at it?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thanks for coming here tonight and sharing that with us, appreciate it.
Can I just make one comment about the trees?
Sure.
Just, just for the audience and the councilmembers, they're actually gonna take out over 50 trees, and that includes trees, because the pipeline's gonna come under the creek and up Worf Road, and then underneath and through the area where behind the storage area going out to the gas station on 41st.
It exists already, it's under there.
Yeah, yeah.
It lives there.
So, in removing it, replacing it, I guess, behind the storage area, they are gonna take out a lot of trees back there. going to take out a lot of trees back there, behind those other people's fences. So my question to staff today was, should we notify those neighbors and at least let them know that they're going to be taking out all those trees, they're not on their property, but just to let them know? So if we have any way to put that out electronically or in the newspaper, maybe we can do a press release in the newspaper, just to let people know that there's going to be 50 trees taken out in the community, and what it's for, and why, and so forth.
Is that the PG&E project or the sewer project?
PG&E.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we could just somehow let people know about that, so that we don't get a lot of the neighbors coming in and saying, what, you know, what's all this all about?
So we did talk to PG&E, and one of the things that they are planning on doing is to canvass the neighborhoods, let neighbors know what's going on, and knock on the doors and give them a heads up.
Yeah, but they may go, are they going to go in the back of the properties?
I need to remind you that this is not on your agenda.
I know, I know.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Mr. Graves?
Thank you for introducing me. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I come tonight to thank you personally, and to thank our Public Works Director, Steve Jasper, for fulfilling the request of the merchants in the village with regards to the public restroom sign. It's up, and the merchants are extremely happy. Now, that only took a few seconds. I hope while we're talking about restrooms, that when you consider the war-free build, that you'll take the suggestion with regards to a restroom at the foot of the wharf very seriously. It's something the community has asked for, for years and years. My next communication is to really compliment all the candidates for city office, the whole five of you. It was an excellent campaign, very little acrimony. I thought you guys did a great job, and I want to applaud all of you for that. Now I have one request again of the Public Works Director. On Riverview Drive between Blue Gum and Riverview Avenue, we have a diagonal parking situation that impedes not only cars going by, but the garbage trucks on Monday morning and the rest of it. I would like to see us look at putting in a challenge line on the west side between Blue Gum and Riverview Drive. I think that's all my communications tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you, duly noted.
Good evening, Bob Edgren. I'm here to try to beat a dead horse. This is in regards to the parklet vote that was taken at the last meeting. I would like to request a revote of that. I don't know if that's feasible or not, but it's based on the fact that, it came immediately to my attention the following day, that none of the merchants, or very few of the merchants down in the village were ever notified of the parklet situation. The little green cards we send out were never mailed to the merchants. They were mailed to the property owners, but not the merchants. And I contend that the merchants down there have just amount, just as much right to be informed as the property owners, if not more, on this subject. So I know a number of merchants were very unhappy. I, I went around getting a signature signed, but I didn't pursue it any further, because I said that probably wouldn't be worthwhile. But with that being said, if nothing more, I'd like to see the city adopt an ordinance whereby the little green mail cards, notice of public hearing, are sent to everybody, including the merchants. And that's all. As far as the trees, did anybody ask the monarchs? I don't know.
Thank you for your comments. Come on up.
Hello, I did not intend to speak about this, but I'm just hearing what one of the other members of the public said regarding this PG&E project. It's actually a statewide project that really involves tens of thousands of trees, if not hundreds of thousands of trees, and communities across the state are standing up to PG&E and asking for due process, including Santa Cruz County and Palo Alto and other cities. I really urge you guys to do the same. The safety concerns that PG&E cites are not really validated. They are stating concerns like the trees breaking into the, you know, damaging the pipelines. There's not been a single documented case in the United States of that happening since, like, forever that I know. Ask, please ask PG&E to actually show you guys the evidence that these 50 trees need to be cut down. And just, I didn't say this in the beginning, my name is Erica Sonevich, and I work with the Sierra Club here in Santa Cruz and in the county, which is why I know a little bit about this, and so again, I just really urge you guys to do, follow the lead of the county and ask PG&E to show you the proof that these trees need to be cut down, because it becomes a climate change issue when we're really ultimately talking about tens of thousands of trees. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I make one comment about that? I was concerned about the, very concerned about the trees also, and I asked if we could have, as part of the project, our city arborists to be part of the project to monitor this, to make sure, because I know they're notorious for cutting too much and trimming too much. So I'll feel more comfortable if we have our arborists from our staff out there, and other staff members keeping an eye on what they're doing every day.
Yeah, I think that, that's a good step, and I hope you also extend to really ask them to prove.
Thank you.
Hi, I just found out that I'm not allowed to push this button that puts my presentation on the screen, so I'd like to invite your attention to the paper handle.
Are you here for a presentation? This is a public comment period for the public that's not on the agenda.
Right.
So if you're on the agenda, then...
I'm not on the agenda, I've got a three-minute thing here, and I thought I'd do you the favor of having a visual as well, but if it's not appropriate, I can move or something.
You're going to talk about this, right?
Yes.
Okay. This is not related to the presentation? This is separate? This is just, sure, go ahead.
Have you set the clock, or?
Well, it hasn't started, okay, where we started over, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Jerry Paul, I'm a 30-year resident of the area, I'm an engineer who's put in over 4,000 hours looking into the water source opportunities for the area, and I'm also a founding member of Water for Santa Cruz County website listed on the bottom. On the next page, I want to talk about regional water source options. Conservation is included in virtually everybody's options, and so is recharging the parisma aquifer under our feet. Some would do it faster than others. The Soquel Creek Water District has agreed to buy potable water from the City of Santa Cruz, so the district wells no longer need to take so much water from the aquifer. And you'll hear the word "in lieu" a lot, and the definition of that is consuming city water in lieu of well water. And that allows Mother Nature to recharge the aquifer naturally, without competition from the district's wells. Next page is a chart with four options on it. The top line shows how we can get water from streams, the sewer, or the sea. The yellow option is the one I favor. The third option, with sewer at the top, is the one you'll hear about in section 9A of your agenda tonight, where the Soquel Creek Water District is using the word "pure." They're putting the word "pure" everywhere, the word sewer appears and the like, because it's of the source of their water. Each of these alternatives has three different kinds of names, a program name, a generic name, and the WASAC name, for the committee that really studied the matter in Santa Cruz, and made unanimous report, that was also unanimously accepted by the city council, and their number-one recommendation, element one, is called "in lieu of stream water," and the maximum doing of that is called "l aquifer," and that's the name that I gave it for using lachlomen to recharge aquifers. Right now, there's a pilot program starting up, which uses existing equipment only, and mine would cost 27 million, or the l aquifer, I should say, is not necessarily mine, would cost 27 million, which compares very favorably with the district's roughly 120 million added cost. That includes capital, operating and finance costs, and compared to Squid Square D-Sale years ago in the rent hand column, it really compares favorably. At the bottom of the page, you can see that if you look at how much water is delivered and the cost, the water for cost is about 10 times better with l aquifer than it is with the sewer scheme. Also, there's no risk of abandonment like there is with the high-cost scheme, because...
You're going to need to wrap up, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like you to encourage paying the city, having the district pay the city for l aquifer, so that the, for quick performance, so l aquifer saves 100 million bucks for local people, that's $10,000 per family. It's a big deal, and I'm sure you could find 100 million dollars useful in other ways.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, oh, come on up. No, that's okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Jill Kastiknola. Last session I was here is representing twofolds. I'm manager of St. John's Sepulchral, who are celebrating our 63rd year in the village, proud to be, as well as my family's own property in the village. My concern to come here a couple weeks ago was concerning the parklets. We were notified about the parklets because we were property owners. As a manager, I was not notified, because what we found out recently is none of the information was sent out to any of the merchants. After speaking to several of our fellow merchants, I completely support your decision you made, and I support our fellow merchants, too. After speaking to several of the merchants on Monterey that might be interested in taking part in the parklets, that might eliminate anywhere from eight parking spaces if any of the four restaurants just on that part of Monterey, from the intersection from Capitola right as it goes up to the hill, could potentially eliminate eight spaces in that one area right there. So my concern, as far as property owners, access to our building, our property, would, if that happens, would be limited. And then, two, access to the business for St. John's Sepulchral would then be directly, possibly directly affected, too. So I was wondering, what does the city council have in, an idea? Are you going to cap it off? That's not for businesses on that one street can go ahead and take part in the parklet? Is there any idea how many businesses we're going to allow? If we're just going to allow it on San Jose and Monterey, are we capping it off?
We limited to the program to two, to two businesses.
Two businesses on each street?
No, they could be in any location they are, and I think, Rich, why don't you...
Normally, we don't respond to public comment, but I'm just going to give you a short answer just to clarify it, and I'll let the community define the program as was approved.
I'll just sit back down, so.
No, you can stand there and listen. Go ahead.
So the program that was approved by the council at the last hearing was for a maximum of two parklets. Each one could occupy up to two spaces, so four spaces total, only on San Jose between the Espinade and Capitola Avenue.
It's a test program for two years, limited to those four. It will be evaluated after the end of that two years.
Okay.
And you can come back and give us your opinion.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. City Council, sorry, anybody else from the public want to address this? We'll go ahead and close public comment period and move to city council comments. Dennis?
I'd just like to point out that, thank you, Ed, for taking down all your signs the first day. It's kind of a tradition in this community that, started by Bruce Arthur years ago, that the day after the election, that the candidates all came and took their signs down, and I noticed that most of them disappeared by today and cleaned our streets up, but thank you for doing that.
Nice to get our town back to normal.
That's right.
Stephanie, any comment?
I just wanted to report on one of the sessions I went to in Long Beach for the annual League of California Cities Conference. They, they had a lot of really good ones this year. They had, I'll just read the title of a couple of them. Making the most of your city's technology, engaging and serving the homeless population through parks and recreation. What planning directors wish council members knew about planning?
That was a good one.
Yeah. Complying with SEQA, Brown Act, and other public noticing requirements. Well, that was, that was the city attorney's session that I went to, that was very good. They have sessions for a lot of the departments, that's very good. Trends in labor relations, medical marijuana, affordable housing. New tools for funding your stormwater program. That's important for us, but the counties and the sanitation district are dealing with Turning aging and underutilized city property into treasure. Massage establishments, challenges and solutions. The sharing economy, managing the challenges and creating opportunities. Improving public schools, effective retail development, minimum wage ordinances, reducing pension and OPEB costs, diversity in city management, officer-involved shootings, wireless infrastructure, you know, it's sort of covered the gamut. So I just wanted to give you just a couple of comments from the one on the shared, sharing economy, managing the challenging and creating, and creating opportunities. Like the information, superhighway of 25 years ago that changed the way we shop and conduct business. The sharing economy is revolutionizing how consumers and businesses choose a ride, a vacation location, a parking space, and even wardrobes. While the emergence of this new market is undeniable, the implications on local government continue to evolve, leaving many cities unsure of the proper approach. How is collaborative consumption shaping future tax policy? How are other cities managing this trend? Participants will learn about emerging trends and discover practical solutions, so forth. Anyway, they had, the speakers were from the city of Long Beach, the city of San Diego, and the manager of client services from Uni Services, which is a government organization. So they talked about, just a minute. They talked about California's economy, an update on California's economy, which was really interesting, and the speaker from Long Beach said that some economists are predicting a recession in 2018. We're growing a little bit, the GDP is growing about 2%, and they said, he said that we're not focusing enough on, we're focusing, we're focusing, we're too busy focusing on issues that are not important, and not enough of the, not enough on the issues that are really important issues. He said jobs are up, unemployment is down, construction is a little slow around the state. 50%, they did a survey, and 50% of the people feel that their life is worse than 30 years ago. Airline travel is up, tourism is up, they talked a little bit about Prop 55, and they said, "Try to get off sales tax so much and switch more to property tax," but that's what we were on before, and that was not, that didn't work very well. The problem is that his revenue growth is slowing down, while pension costs are rising, agricultural issues, the drought. A third of our hay is shipped overseas. They talked about crops and food sources and things like that, workers losing jobs. And they, oh, they talked about the minimum wage, and they said it's not, they didn't think it was going to reduce poverty, because workers are going to lose their jobs, and many workers will have to pay more, many people will have to pay more for some goods, because they'll raise the prices for goods to pay for the higher wages for minimum wage. So what's the, what's the, what's, what can really help us? Pre-K education, pre-K education. Educate our people so they can have better jobs, to have better futures and better lives. And they also said, "We're not building enough housing for the growing population," and is that, and they made a big pitch for housing, and said that if we don't hire enough, don't build enough housing, it's going to stifle growth. And I thought, "That's okay, that's okay, in our area and in some other areas." But anyway, it was, it was interesting, and I'll report on some of the others another time, but that report actually was good news on California. He said things are, a lot of things are moving up, they're, they're moving slowly up, but they're, they're slowly getting better. So, but I don't know about that recession in 2018. So I just had another comment about, about this week and Tuesday, and the last eight years, we have made a lot of really important environmental gains, and I just wanted to mention a few of them to you. I want to remind us about some of the wonderful gains that we've had, and I don't want us to go backwards. The, in eight years ago, when we had the stimulus package, you know, a lot of us didn't really follow the details of it. It was huge, it was complicated, it was federal, but this, this is just some interesting information. It laid the foundation for a clean energy future by investing more than $90 billion in renewable energy, energy efficiency, and green jobs in technology. Not only did the economy recover, but at a time when economic turmoil could have delayed the deployment of clean energy technologies, exactly the... the deployment of clean energy technologies, exactly the opposite happened. Between 2009 and 2016, solar electric generation increased more than 30-fold. The government's bailout of the auto industry led to another major accomplishment, a big boost in fuel economy. The White House spurred, spurred the car and truck manufacturers to agree to increase average fuel economy standards, miles per gallon, to 36.6 miles per gallon by 2017, that's next year, and 54.5 miles per gallon by 2025. I have to say, that is really huge, because that's something that environmentalists in this state have been working on for 25 years, and people around the country have been working on for 25, 30 years to try to get automobile manufacturers to manufacture more fuel-efficient cars so we could decrease our reliance on oil. And finally, finally, we've done that. Finally, we've taken a big step. Can you imagine 54, a car gets 54.5 miles per gallon? And that would be, that's just average? That's terrific. And that will avoid millions of tons of carbon pollution, accelerating, it will accelerate the transition to electric vehicles. Just a couple of other things. Our president, Obama, designated 23 national monuments, protecting 265 million acres of land and water, more than any of his predecessors. We've moved to clean up carbon pollution from existing coal-fired power plants with the EPA's groundbreaking Clean Power Plan. The United States and China issued a joint climate statement in 2014 that paved the way for a breakthrough global climate agreement in Paris. There have been, you know, people say they want to change, and that, you know, we haven't done a lot of things. The environment has really had some wonderful, wonderful things happen, especially in the last four or five years, and I'm really, really proud that we've done these things, and I don't want us to slide backwards, so we need to all be vigilant and do well here in Capitola and Santa Cruz County in California. We're doing, we're doing well here. That's all.
Thanks. Dr. Combs?
Sure. Environment is truly an issue that's very important for us to consider. California's led the way, so follow Steph's comments a little bit. California had a unique place at the Paris Talks. It was almost like a separate country because of the way California's led the world in this area. I'd like to thank Capitola for passing Measure F. I just, you know, you've got to give yourself a nod.
Thank you.
Truly, this is a wonderful thing for many reasons, and I'm not going to enumerate them, but part of it is, city council has promised this money is going to be spent on the wharf, the beach, and we've carried through on those promises for other 55% taxes, and we will. I'd like to tell you a story that encapsulates my next point. So I moved from Santa Rosa Valley to here, and I worked on, as you know me, I get involved in projects. I worked on the covered bridge project, so I helped raise money for that and helped build the railings and stuff like that. One of the things I cherish, actually, is I'd bring my daughter with me everywhere. And so I was teaching my daughter Dominique how to pound nails. Well, she didn't quite get it, and there's a big dent, and I could tell you exactly where it is on the railing. So I think about that when I go to the park, I look for the dent. So the reason why this story is important is Capitola is embarking on two major projects. One is the library, and one is the wharf. Everyone should be involved in those projects. The ones that you feel, I see Barbara here, she's leading the charge in terms of that and in terms of our volunteer group. We're going to be asking citizens for many different levels of participation. I'm sure she'll be telling us about that in the future. Many people are involved in that project right now. The wharf is going to be a major project. It's an iconic symbol of Capitola. You cannot imagine any picture of Capitola without the wharf there. So I want people to be involved in that. Years later, when you bring your grandkids here, or you come back to visit, or whatever, you're going to see that little dent on a railing somewhere. That dent is where you helped these projects. So that's the kind of involvement I want to see. I want to see people get involved so that you know that you contributed to this community. Thank you.
Michael? This last weekend, we celebrated our second annual plein air event. The Capitola Art and Cultural Commission hosted 40 artists who gathered around town and painted in the plain air. And the event was fabulous. Roy Segura was a tremendous help at the, at New Brighton Middle School for the Sunday event where we displayed all the art. Our first-place winner is up on the screen, as well as in the flesh, right there, next to last year's first-place winner. One of the benefits of being the winner is the city purchases the art for their permanent collection. It's a watercolor, and I forget the fellow's name who did it, Curtis?
I believe it's Cyrus.
Or Cy, I have it.
Sorry.
Chad Hunter. Chad Hunter. And I believe that, I was there when they pinned the ribbon on, and no one was more surprised than himself. He was just pleased to be invited to paint, because we picked the 40 artists out of 65 who applied. This will be an ongoing event. I promise you, it will happen every year. This is only the second annual. We get more people attending all the time. We had almost 400 guests come to New Brighton Middle School this Sunday to view the art that was done the previous three days. So well done, Art and Cultural Commission. Larry, thanks for your help. He was there tirelessly the entire day on Sunday, schlepping things around, so thank you. That's it.
Thanks. And just one more comment. In addition to citizens in Capitola passing Measure F, I believe, the numbers aren't totally done yet, but I believe the citizens of Santa Cruz County successfully passed Measure D. And what that means to the city of Capitola is approximately $400,000 every year in revenue for road repair could come into our city. Some auxiliary lanes could be added on Highway 1, which for anybody that has to go to work in the morning and get on Highway 1, there may be some relief in the upcoming future. Metro, which had gone through some significant cuts, will now be completely back to whole with their routes. There's increased, with some money being dedicated towards lift line, there'll be some weekend service on lift line, which has never existed, for peracruiser participants. And money will be going into Monterey Berry Sanctuary Trail. So Measure D is good for all of Santa Cruz County, and like I said, right now it has about 1% still passing, and we'll keep our fingers crossed that that succeeds. So, thank you. Staff comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you are well aware, our police chief, Rudy Escalante, retired just a short few months ago. We still have him in the room. And since Rudy announced his retirement, we went into a nationwide recruitment process to look for our new chief. And with the help of some of the city council members on a panel, we had some great finalists here come to town and interview. I'm happy to report today that Terrence McManus, Terry, will be our new police chief in Capitola. Chief McManus is going to come to us from the city of San Diego, where he spent a 30-year career down there, most recently as the, let me get the title right, the Assistant Chief in Charge of Centralized Investigations, where he was responsible for overseeing San Diego's over 15 investigative units and approximately 350 sworn civilian employees. So Terry is also a native of the Bay Area. He comes from a police family background, and he will be starting on December 5th. So we also hope to get him to our next meeting here where we can introduce him to the council and the community. So join me when we see Terry in welcoming him to our great town.
What is the last day of our interim police chief? Will he be?
I think we wrote the contract, so it extends out to next year at some point. He's here until Terry starts.
Oh, he's a welcome addition. Okay, great. That's great news for the city of Capitola. Go ahead, Doc.
Yeah. So I want to thank the city manager for putting together, I think, a rather good process. You called upon members of the community, professional and regular citizens, to participate, and I think they really were very engaged. They appreciated being asked to be participating, and I was one of those people, and I think your choice is a great one. Definitely.
Thank you. I liked seeing you at the podium, Mr. Public Works Director, because there's good things happening in our town. Why don't you give us a little update?
Lots going on. A picture on the screen is our newly refurbished tennis courts, which opened today to play. They will be open from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM moving forward. The work was done pretty quickly, had a few rain delays in there, but the word I've heard from the tennis players is the new surface is wonderful. So for those of you who play, get out there and play. We've got no more, no more cracks on the courts.
Are we going to need additional parking in that area for the influx of tennis players?
No parking question.
The tennis players did reach out to me and ask if they could hold a little reception to thank the city council at the tennis court sometime in the following, sometime in the following week. So they'll be reaching out to you as well.
Great asset. Very good. What else you got for us?
So next week, we'll be paving Armageddon, is the way I'm going to put it. Granite Rock will be paving on Park Avenue, Kennedy, and Monterey. There will be street closures in place, no parking on the streets when they're paving in those areas. Worked with the police department, and for residents who need to get cars off the streets, don IRLs to put them, we will not be enforcing the time, the paved parking in the two lots behind city wall, so they're welcome to put their cars, trailers, whatever they want in there during construction. It's actually going to start tomorrow with some grinding around the schools, since the school's not in session tomorrow, but the heavy closures and paving will be starting on Monday, and will continue all of next week and up to Thanksgiving. So just want to warn people to be prepared. And in the middle of that, we will be also doing a paving on Stockton Avenue. That's going to take a couple of days in and of itself, and that'll have its own set of traffic controls. We're going to try and keep cars moving through there. We're actually going to be putting the cars coming eastbound onto the Espinade so we can keep the cars going on the westbound. You know, if you don't have to go through Capitola next week, it's a good time to avoid it. But once we're done, we're going to have some nice roads.
So with, if weather is, oh, nice to us, would you say that the Kennedy-Monterey projects will be done by Thanksgiving? Is that our hope?
Yes. So do some no-rain dances, and let's get this done.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate all that hard work. Larry, what do you have for us?
Good evening. Unfortunately, this week, we had to close the skate park at McGregor Park for most of the week due to a couple graffiti incidents. We brought first alarm to watch the facility. Public Works crew cleaned and had to repaint. It's scheduled to reopen tomorrow, but I do want to remind, we have quite a few questions at the police department, that if there is graffiti, we will be closing the park. And hopefully, the message gets out to the community. I know there was quite a few people that were very upset that it was closed, but, you know, hopefully, this is a one-time thing. This is the first time we've had to do this, and we don't look, it's not fun for anyone. So we want to make sure that people know that we don't want graffiti at the park.
Do we have a camera out there?
Not a permanent solution, but the main reason is there's no power out there.
Well, let's put power out there. Let's put a camera out there.
There's no power near there. Yeah, no power's near there.
Solar panels.
We are definitely looking at solutions for that. So, yes, yes. There is, there is solar light out there. This time of year, it doesn't extend that long because of the trees, but, you know, hopefully, we'll find something. Again, this is the first time we've run into this issue. We hope it doesn't happen again.
And how long did we have it closed? What was the close?
It is actually, the first graffiti was on Sunday. We didn't get, we weren't able to close it till Monday, but it's been closed pretty much through today, so four days. It was only going to be closed two days, and then someone got upset, I'm guessing, at us closing it and put some more out there, so we closed it. It'll be open tomorrow as long as there's no, no other incidents.
Mr. Mayor, we're, we're going to be proposing, the Art and Cultural Commission will be proposing a mural on all the vertical surfaces of the skate park. We believe that will virtually eliminate the potential for graffiti.
Be an interesting discussion.
Yes.
Comments?
So that's just the skate park, so people could bring their dogs and?
That's correct. The other, the other pieces of the facility are not closed.
Okay. Any other comments?
So, yeah, I do have a question. So since we're skate, closing that, what's it cost the city?
It costs the city, well, for the public works time for cleaning and painting that, but we also have to pay for first alarm to get out there, because if we don't have someone out there, the fences will be, will be hopped all the time. And the report is that most people listen to the first alarm folks, but that's the only way we can actually keep it closed, and it's during, during the day.
So how much is?
I don't have the numbers. I believe, yeah, I don't have the exact numbers.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. And any other staff comments? We're going to move on to the consent calendar. These are items that we usually, routine items that we usually deal with all in one vote. Let me check with the council, is anybody that would like to pull any item on the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull items D and E, please.
D and E?
Please.
Okay. Stephanie, anything you'd like to pull?
G, please.
G? Doc? Michael?
H.
NH. We're going to pull D, E, G, and H. Before we do that, anybody from the public that would like to pull any items on the consent calendar? Seeing them, we'll bring it back, so I'll take a motion for all the items.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, so these are items except D, E, G, and H. All in favor? Aye opposed?
I'm going to abstain on A, please.
Did you say E?
I pulled D, E, G, and H, and Stephanie, you're going to pull?
I'm going to abstain on A, because I wasn't here for the minutes.
So you have that?
What was that?
Stephanie's going to abstain on A because the minutes are in there and she wasn't here.
I wasn't here.
Okay, so we'll go back through these. We'll begin with D. Dennis, you pulled D?
Yeah, can I pull E first? Can I do, you mind if I do that first?
We can go to E first.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to do, this is a, the 2017 meeting schedule for the council's accessory agency and planning commission. I'd like to move that we continue this item till the new council sees, to let them make that decision.
Second for that?
Sure.
Any discussion on that? Anyone in the public like to talk on this item, the calendar for next year? Okay, we have a motion, all in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously that the meeting schedule will be carried over till next year for the new council to decide. Okay, that takes us to, do you want to go back to D?
Please, please, could I?
D.
It's a consideration of resolution establishing days of closure for the city offices during 2017 calendar year. No offense, Mr. Trimony, we're back to the Columbus Day again. And why do we celebrate Columbus Day in California? The guy was never here. He didn't bring us any good tidings. Shouldn't it be named after a Californian explorer like Portola or?
America of Youspichi.
America of Mespiche.
A great Italian.
Yeah. Or even in the person who is the character in the book where Capitola was named. She, it could be her day. So even though us, the country, may celebrate it as Columbus Day, I think that we can actually rename it in our own right to what it is and still celebrate it as a holiday if we're going to take a holiday.
We'll take it under consideration.
Once again. And I think it should be seriously considered, because this is the last time in 12 years that I've sat next to Dennis that I'm going to hear about Columbus Day.
You won't hear about it again.
I would like to, I would like to affirm what Councilman Harland said. We're going to seriously take it under consideration for next year.
Thank you.
We can hope of that, Neil.
Explorer Day. Okay, so with that, we'll, item D, is there a motion to approve the calendar?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Aye opposed? Come on, Dennis, did you?
Dennis? No, I'm in there. I'm going with you.
Okay. That motion carries unanimously for D. So D and E pass unanimously. It takes us to G. Who pulled?
I pulled G, and I just, just for a real quick comment, this is a milestone. This is a huge, huge deal, and I really want to thank all the staff members for working on this. This is going to be an update for our ADA plan, Americans with Disabilities Act plan that was originally adopted in 1994. And I remember standing on the steps at the county government center after it was passed with all the local elected officials cheering, cheering, cheering. And so here we are with this very outdated plan and old buildings and lots of little problems, and we need to really update things and make it accessible for everybody. So I'm really excited as a nurse that's worked in this field for over 30 years and see people's needs change. You know, we're young, and then middle-aged and old, and then you get older and older, and you have more needs. And so we're, I'm really excited that, that we're going to be making some long-needed improvements and, but I know it's going to be a really big undertaking for staff. It's going to be a big, big project, and so we may need to look at getting some, maybe some extra help to help with this, with managing this and the wharf and all the other projects that we have. with managing this and the Wharf and all the other projects that we have. I'm just concerned about staff's time, that we're just loaded like a general plan, not quite a general plan, but like half a general plan or quarter of a general plan on a staff person. And then, you know, it's there, it's gonna be big. So, we just need to take that into consideration about if we need a temporary person for, you know, a little, you know, a couple of years to get us through this or something. Normally, I wouldn't, you know, I don't like to talk about hiring more staff because of the expense of that. But, but we can't just pass this and think that they're gonna, they're gonna take this on their own workload and they're just gonna do it. Because it's huge, they're gonna be looking at all of our buildings, all of our streets, all of our facilities and, I'm sorry, I should, I'll let you make a staff report. I'm sorry, we didn't give you a chance to...
No, that is okay, I'm just here to answer any questions if you guys need any answers or anything like that. In terms of, I can just make a comment, in terms of staff time, we do have our consulting firm who will do basically all the field work and provide documentation and basically results of all that evaluation from our facilities, programs, ride of ways, all of that provided to me. I will review it, so staff time is limited and that's why we have this consulting firm. They are the professionals, they know exactly what they're doing. They've done this job not only in other cities, universities, things like that. So, nothing but good recommendations, that's why we chose this firm. I believe they can handle the load and we can just review it and make sure that everything is copacetic and get this project done.
But then, but then they're gonna have, they're gonna have hundreds of recommendations and that's my, that's my, that's where the rub is gonna be, where who's, how are we gonna handle all of those recommendations on our staff's side, so we just need to talk about that.
We'll have to say, thank you for those comments, Brian, appreciate those. Any other comments on that? So we have a motion to approve this, Stephanie?
Move approval?
Okay, is there a second? Motion approval, second, all in favor? Aye opposed? Item G carries unanimously, Michael, to H?
This is a program that enables a resident to designate a blue parking space in front of their home. You know, for better or for worse, we can all recognize the fact that for some unknown reason, well, for a known reason, human nature, people seem to think that they own the parking space in front of their house when in fact, it's the city street. I have concerns, I see that it can only be in front of their home, their own home, but if they're a part-time resident, if it's a vacation place for them, they have just taken away a parking space in the neighborhood except for someone displaying a handicap placard in front of their vacation home.
Does need to be their primary residence?
And they can get a PG&E bill.
Yeah, there's ways around.
I mean, I just, I just wanna make sure we tread very carefully, we're very careful when we do the applications for this because I can see, you know, neighborhood parking wars going on, especially if someone has a space designated as a blue space in front of their house and then someone else with a handicap placard parks in that space. Assume legally, correct?
Yeah, it's clearly stated in the policy that anybody with the proper designation of a handicap placard can park in these spaces.
And what qualifies someone that their off-street parking space is not adequate?
Yeah, that's gonna be something, admittedly a subjective review. Myself and the, our ADA compliance officer will go out there and look at it and talk to the applicant, see what they say, you know, if they just say, well, it's just not, I don't like to do it, that's not gonna comply. We're gonna look at it and address it on a case-by-case basis.
And let me, let me just say that I'm not saying this because I don't think this should happen. I think this is an important issue, it's an important ability for someone to be able to do that in front of their home because there are some homes still in Capitola without off-street parking. So this is significant and I'm not against having a handicap placard parking space. I just wanna make sure we don't start neighborhood parking wars, that's all.
Yeah, I have a concern, our community development director sometimes says when we try to propose ordinances, does it become a problem for us to enforce? And that's my only concern is whenever we make a new ordinance, does it create a burden on the city to enforce it? So we'll just have to see how the, this is just, the policy is...
Just the policy, non-ordinance. You know, we've tried to put in some controls in it that it has to be renewed on an annual basis. So if one gets put in and that person moves away, that, you know, the parking space will be resort, returned to public, public parking space sometime in the future. So, you know, I agree with all the comments the council's made, it's a new program. We, for years, we've not entertained these requests because of various issues, some of which you brought up, some of which, you know, involve whether making it a completely accessible space. But we thought, we did find that other cities are doing it and we wanted to bring it for you to consider. And you're right, it's gonna be a learning curve, if it doesn't work, we'll be back here.
Doc, get a question?
So, I see a lot of people jump out of their car with quite a bit of energy and I say, God, why are you in the... You know where I'm going. So, is there gonna be a review of the person, I mean, do we...
Yeah, every year, they have to present to us their... The DMV issued placard for disabled parking and also proved that they still live at that residence.
Is that a yearly thing with DMV also?
Yeah, I, I think it could be two years at a time.
Some are permanent.
Some are permanent.
Yeah.
But, if they have a permanent one, I'm not so worried about it.
Okay.
Temporary ones are not permitted, it has to be one that's at least for a year. If it's a temporary one, that would have to have extenuating circumstances.
Okay, so, we're gonna monitor, I mean, they have to renew it each year, right? And then how about taking it off as...
So, all the permits are gonna end December 31st. You know, we get to the middle of January, people haven't renewed. You know, we may try and contact them or whatnot, but eventually, by, I'd say by the end of January, I'll put an issue out to the crew to remove any spaces that haven't been renewed. If it gets renewed and they say, oh, every, you know, if it gets removed and they wanna do it, they're gonna have to pay the new application fee. So there's a, I think, a $200 first-time fee, they get an application, renewing it, I think it's $50 is what we're proposing. So if they, we remove it and they still want it, they'll have to go back and pay the $200.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Dennis? Dennis, go ahead.
Steve, there's many places in the city that don't have curb and gutter. So we're limiting, we're already eliminated those. And what happens in those cases, can they use that, the space across the street? Or is that, is there, or does it have to physically be in front of their property?
There has to be, I mean, I think the goal of the policy is it has to be parking in front of the property. If there's not curb and gutter there, there's other things we can do. We can paint a little curb on the street or certainly put up a sign still. What we're trying to avoid is you can't ask for one in front of your neighbor's property or something like that. So, case-by-case basis, we may, you know, if there's not parking there, we're not gonna put in front of somebody else's house though, but we'll have to look at it.
How many inquiries have you had about this or concerns?
Oh, my time here, probably half dozen or less. We have two right now though, that are pretty active.
I just, I see a real policing issue. Maybe there's something we can do for those two or three people out there, but, you know, I think you're open to gamut if you put, open the door on this thing completely.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when we, when we took, started talking about this, we took a look at other cities and it's relatively common in other cities. The city of Santa Cruz does it, city of San Jose does it, I think. You know, a lot of the cities that we looked at around had a policy for this and this is what we modeled after. So, it's not, we're not really wandering into uncharted territory and really what this is about is somebody, primarily somebody that doesn't have onsite parking or if the onsite parking is steeply sloping or on the bottom of a lot of stairs and the on-street parking is just more, you know, more accessible, allowing them to have native space. It's not their space, as council member Terminy said, it has to be in front of their house.
You just brought some up here, Jamie, is that if they have a parking space onsite, they can't have one?
Yes, unless there's, unless there's some extenuating circumstance with that parking space. But yeah, so it's for people that don't have parking or that...
Is this true of the village too?
Yes.
It is only good in residential neighborhoods, so it's not in any of the commercial neighborhoods, the village is not compliant. Village already has ADA spaces for compliance, so this is only in residential neighborhoods.
Fanmark, Cherry?
And it can only be on residential and collector's streets, not on arterials.
But if you have a perfectly flat driveway, this isn't to give you another space that's only yours.
I wasn't in favor of it when I first heard about it, but then I thought, apparently there's somebody that lives on Wharf Road. So I think if, if there really is some extraneous circumstance where this person doesn't have parking and it could work, I'd be willing to try a couple of them. I really don't like taking away parking on the street for anything, for anybody, because parking's so precious. But if, if truly somebody doesn't have any parking on their property and they really need something, I'd consider it. But I'd wanna be really strict about it and make sure that it's really, really meets the guidelines and really necessary.
Yeah, I mean, we have lots of ordinances, this comes down to how do we effectively enforce this ordinance? And I don't have a problem with the ordinance and we're just gonna have to see it, but if you scrutinize the applications, it may not have a problem, so... Mike, interested in making a motion on this?
I move approval.
Second?
Did you open the public?
This is on the consent calendar. Yeah.
Okay.
We've had them all talk about the public. Anyone else wanna talk on this item? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, so that includes the consent calendar. Takes us to a general government hearing and our first one is update on groundwater replacement. I'll be coming from, I see Mr. Daniels walking up here, come on up, Bruce.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm here to talk about SoCal Creek Water District, as you probably know, but everyone may not at home, we supply water to everything east of 41st Avenue pretty much. And so the city of Santa Cruz supplies the other side of 41st. Our water district goes all the way down to La Silva Beach, so about seven miles, 40,000 customers, people. So it's quite responsible agency for all those people. Next slide, I guess I... Right, so in SoCal Creek Water District, even though SoCal Creek is in our name, we don't take any water out of SoCal Creek, all of our water is groundwater. So we have something like 17 wells all over the district. And the most important thing, I think, to start off is you have to know what the problems are 'cause you can't fix something if it's not a real problem. So we talk to you about the problems and then Ms. Schumacher will tell you about the solutions. So, I'm here to scare you and then she's gonna give you a treat. So, next one. First off, you know that we have a deficit. Back in the early 80s, pumping went crazy, went way high over the safe yield, you can see this line there for the safe recharge yield. And so we accumulated a deficit, that's 24,000 acre feet of deficit. That's about seven years of our water supply. So if we stop giving water to customers for seven years, that's what it would take to make up that deficit. And that's what you see over there, the needed. We intend to do that with the things that Ms. Schumacher will tell you. The other thing I can point out that's a problem, you can see the safe recharge line goes straight for a while and then dips. That's from climate change. So we're estimating that in the next 30 years, we will lose 11% of our recharge. That's our supply, just from climate change. So, and you notice it keeps going down in the future. So, we have a challenge because over the years, we're gonna be losing more and more of our supply that we need somehow to make up. So that's a big problem. And why is that a real problem? We're, of course, right next to the ocean and as you have a deficit, water levels go down, down, down. In fact, if you are put a well in most places in Capitola, you'd have to go below sea level before you'd find water. So it's like going out on the beach and digging a hole, that hole gets filled in with saltwater eventually. You can see the red dots on the right, Seaside, La Silva and so forth, so four red dots there. That's active saltwater intrusion in our monitoring wells, not in our production wells yet. And you also see over on the left, that's not one of our wells, that's one of the city's wells. A lot of folks don't realize, the city has wells in that area and there's saltwater intrusion there. So, we have saltwater intrusion to our east, we have saltwater intrusion to our west, so there's no doubt that saltwater intrusion is around. It's not, you know, halfway out into the ocean, it's, it's already on land and that's a problem. And in fact, the state has identified this district as critically overdrafted. That's a special designation the state makes. There's just a handful of districts all over the state that have that designation and we're one of them. So that shows that, you know, this is really a serious problem. In fact, all the experts that look at it say, if you keep going the way you're going, eventually you will get saltwater intrusion and it'll be in the production wells and that'll be bad. And in fact, we, as we look at things, we see that, once we see saltwater intrusion in Aptos there, on the beach, within two years, it'll be in the production wells there. And that, we have five production wells in that area. That means, you know, that's a very short fuse, so the ability to fix things after that happens is very tenuous. So we're working really hard to try and solve that. Once we solve things, it'll take us 20 years to come up with a solution. Once we start solving the thing, it takes 20 years to replace the water that we've drawn out of the basin in all that time. We have some other issues. There are thousands of pumpers in this district area, up in the basin, and so all of them have their straw in the same bucket and, of course, we have no control over them. So, we have to do things by talking and being nice and see if we can come up with collaboration and, you know, joint solutions and that's always a challenge. We also have water quality issues. We had arsenic a number of years ago and we've put in place a plant to reduce that way below the maximum level. We have chromium 6, we were the first district in the state to be approved with our solution for removing chromium 6. We have a new one that's been found called TCP, tri-chloro-propane, and we're working now and trying to come up with a solution for that. So, there's always something that pops up and it's expensive. The chromium 6 solution is several million dollars to solve that problem, just that one problem. So, that's a lot of the challenges we have. So now, you're scared, Ms. Schumacher.
Welcome. Hi, thank you, thank you for inviting us to speak tonight. I do this all the time, speaking to boards and commissions, especially to my board, and I'm nervous today because my son is in the audience. One of the artists being recognized, so...
Oh, good for him.
Hopefully I'll come back. But as Bruce talked about, I think you guys would agree that water is a challenge here in our mid-county area. Would you agree that, based on what Bruce said tonight? And one of the reasons why we're trying to come around and talk to government agencies such as the council, we'll be speaking at some of the planning commissions and the public works commissions for the county, is to share what we're doing, to get that word out. We always invite people to come to our mains, but we know people are busy, so we thank you for letting us come tonight to talk to you. We mailed this out at the beginning of this year, this is our community water plan. It was mailed to all of our customers and it was put together after a 13th month evaluation of what projects are out there for SoCal Creek Water District to pursue. From 2006 to 2013, SoCal Creek Water District had partnered on a supplemental supply project and that was the Squid Square Desalination Project. We spent a lot of time and we spent a lot of money. And unfortunately, you know, $12 million worth of effort led us to something that the city wasn't comfortable with and so they stepped back from the project and left us trying to figure out what we were gonna do. So 13 months of meetings, getting people to come in and talk to us here, since we have our meetings here, what kind of project should we be looking at? And instead of it just being a water supply project, we're coupling that multifaceted approach with other actions that we're doing to provide a holistic, long-term roadmap. This community water plan was based on community input, phone surveys, meetings, our board and technical evaluation. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the five components. First and foremost, as Jerry Paul said earlier, and is something that we've done for many, many years, almost two decades, is water conservation. Water conservation is the cornerstone of how to address our water supply shortage. I like to think of it as, you know, we're, we're in overdraft, it's like a bank. So what do you do when you don't have money? You save whatever money you have and that's what we're trying to do. We're saving whatever water we do have. Our customers right now are using about 50 gallons per person per day, we're very proud of that. We're also continuing to implement a robust rebate program. And as you can see in that diagram on the top right, that is our waste-free flushing unit which has been in areas in Capitola where we're flushing water mains to increase and enhance water quality without letting go of any water down the storm drains. So like a bank account, you save what you can and then you manage what you have. So our second component of our community water plan is groundwater management. Our groundwater management program includes many programs and activities. The ones I'm gonna highlight here is the Well Master Plan. The Well Master Plan is a program where we're trying to redistribute groundwater pumping away from the coast, away from the potential to draw seawater further inland. So the picture on the right was just taken yesterday, it's our second well from our Well Master Plan which is the new Granite Way well in Aptos is being put in right now. That is a well that will be put in and like all of these wells, it doesn't add or contribute to additional groundwater pumping. We're just redistributing the pumping that we are currently doing. Another one of our programs in the groundwater management activities... Another one of our programs in the groundwater management activities is the monitoring program. We maintain over eighty monitoring wells, a half, a couple dozen of them right along the coast. That's what gives us the data that Bruce showed to you in terms of water quality, chloride levels, as well as water level. That's our indicator so that we can understand and get a better grip on what is happening in our groundwater basin. In addition to those two programs, we're continuing to meet the 2014 Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. This was legislation that was passed landmark in California, meaning that the first, it's the first time statewide that groundwater will be managed. So again, if you recognize that room, it's right across the way. We love Capitola facilities, thank you. It's where four agencies have come together, the county of Santa Cruz, the city of Santa Cruz, SoCal Creek Water District, and Central Water District, as well as private well owners. It's an eleven-board member agency that has been brought together to oversee the creation of a groundwater sustainability plan. That will bring the groundwater basin, and because it's critically overdrafted, we have to bring the basin into balance by 2040. That's the state mandate. That's really the charge, not just kind of locally what we're seeing under the ground and we need to do something about it. The state now has said critically overdrafted basins such as ours have to be brought into balance. So they are requiring us to create a plan, they will be requiring us to do objective, measurable milestones that we need to submit, and, you know, the threat is, if we don't bring the basin into balance, then the state has the opportunity to come in and take over. So what do you do when you have a bank account that has no money? Well, you try to get a job, you try to bring income in, and that's what this last component is, is we have an overdrafted groundwater basin, and we need to bring in new supplies. So SoCal Creek Water District, I think, as a very smart decision was to move forward on three options. We aren't going to put all of our eggs in one basket this time. Instead, we know that taking, taking time and carefully looking at projects will help us better understand and have better footing for when we do approve a project, what we're going to do. So the three options that we are currently considering include seawater desalination, river water transfers with the city of Santa Cruz, and taking purified water and putting it back into the ground. The desalination project is a project down in Moss Landing. That project is currently having environmental review. They're should be issuing an environmental impact report next year. So we are waiting to see how that project goes forward. We have entered into a non-binding, non-financial agreement at this point. The river water transfer project is a project that SoCal Creek Water District is working with the city of Santa Cruz, where we could purchase a small amount of water, excess winter water, in times when, I'm sorry, when that water doesn't have water rights. So pre-1914 water rights, they can sell a small amount. We're very interested in buying that water and seeing how that will come into our system in terms of water quality and operations. That's a five-year pilot project. That pilot project could come into the larger project, which the city of Santa Cruz is currently conducting through their Water Supply Advisory Committee. Again, one of the, these two projects have some limitations in terms of timeliness, in terms of water availability. So the third option, which is SoCal Creek Water District's preferred project, is a groundwater replenishment project, and I'm going to spend a couple minutes talking on that. Yeah?
I wanted to talk about this issue of preferred, this tag that we use for preferred. It doesn't mean we're not going to do the others. It doesn't mean that we're only going to concentrate on the preferred one. It just means that, for us, this is the only project that we have any control over. The other ones, the desalination is run by this organization down in Moss Landing, the river transfer is being done by the city, and so they could decide to change the project somehow, they could decide to cancel it, they could decide anything they want, and we have no control over it. The only one we have control over is the purification project. So that's why we prefer it. It's much more certain, because we cannot afford to fail, given the timeliness.
So these are my show and tells, and I wanted to say, you know, the Pure Water SoCal Project, which is what we're calling the Groundwater Replenishment Project, does indeed take wastewater, either from the city of Santa Cruz's wastewater treatment facility, or raw wastewater from the Santa Cruz County Sanitation District, purify it. And so I wanted to show people what that looks like. So this is secondary effluent that's collected from this Santa Cruz County wastewater treatment facility. It's actually been in this bottle for a couple months. This would be one of our options for the source water. I didn't bring the raw wastewater because I think everybody kind of knows what raw wastewater looks like. And then this is a bottle of purified water from a project down in Monterey called Pure Water Monterey. This water goes through advanced treatment process that includes microfiltration, reverse osmosis, UV, and advanced oxidation. This is the water that we would treat and then inject into the ground to replenish the basin and create a seawater barrier. This project, like Bruce says, is, most of the components that we can do by ourselves, but with all projects, they do require partnerships. So Pure Water SoCal, still, we are actively working with the county sanitation district, as well as the city of Santa Cruz Public Works. And why did we choose this project as one to further consider? We heard from our customers in our community, and the qualities that are important to them in a supplemental supply project were water quality, timeliness, and reliability. And of all the options that we looked at, this is one project that met those three So just quickly, I wanted to just walk through this process again. We are not hiding the fact that the source water is wastewater. In fact, we're quite proud that we're able to take this water and put it to beneficial reuse. Currently, eight to nine million gallons a day goes out to the ocean. It is treated to secondary levels. But that water could be captured. It could be captured and then brought back into our community for beneficial reuse to replenish the groundwater basin. The purification process, again, is multi-stage, and then we would inject that into the ground. We know here in our community that what our customers feel, what they think about their water, it's really important to them. So we've conducted quite a few phone surveys and web surveys about what are their perceptions of water that is wastewater that goes to purification? What is the perceptions of desalination? What is the perception of more conservation and don't do a project at all? If anybody's interested in those, those phone surveys are available on our website. I took one snapshot of some results on a question where we asked people, you know, would you support or do you like this concept of taking wastewater and treating it and injecting it into the ground? And we got fifty-nine percent level of support that either said it was a very good or good idea. Following that, we explained to them the treatment process, what went on. We didn't, you know, we said before, just we treat it and we put it into the ground. We talked to them about what that treatment was, how it included multiple steps, how it would be injected back into the ground, how that water would be pulled up, and then we would treat through our groundwater production well treatments. And then we got a level of support of seventy-seven percent. So we recognize that education and understanding what's involved does help people understand the project. Our board of directors and our staff are really taking a serious look at what other projects are out there that are just like this. So we've toured a couple of projects. This is a picture from a tour that we did in Southern California. The groundwater replenishment system is a project done by Orange County. Prior to that, it was called Water Factory Twenty-One. Purification has been put in place there since 1975. They've just hit the two billion gallon mark down in Southern California for that project. We also know, and we have a map that we have on our website, that there are already eight projects just like this one that are either operating or permitted, and another eighteen projects that are looking at using recycled water and purifying it and putting it into the ground. These are the types of projects that we're looking at. These are the types of projects that we're going to be evaluating and building into our understanding of concerns or issues that our community may have. This is the map that I was just showing you, talking about. So again, why we're here is because we're just trying to get as much information out to the public as possible. We are currently going through a lot of studies and evaluations. We finished our feasibility study earlier this year. We're now conducting several other studies related to water quality, evaluating constituents of emerging concerns, pharmaceutical, pharmaceutical, and other types of projects like personal care products are very important to our customers to make sure that we're taking that out and that the water is safe. So we are conducting a study that we will be doing and initiating at the beginning of the year. It will have an expert panel from the National Water Research Institute overseeing that study. We're also doing groundwater modeling to evaluate when we put the water into the ground, what occurs? Is there any kind of leaching from natural minerals or natural constituents that are in the ground that can then be extracted into this pure water? How do we treat that? What kind of post-treatment is required? And all of these studies are going to then be rolled into our environmental impact report. So we are launching publicly, we've been kind of working with a consultant in defining the project description, but at the middle of this month, we will be kicking off our notice of preparation and initial study, and what we call the scoping period. So we will be asking members of the public and interested agencies to come and look at our notice of preparation initial study, come to our public meeting. Our public meeting will be on December seventh, and we'll have two meetings, two o'clock and six o'clock, and that's in this little handout that you guys have, where people can come and speak and learn about the project. Just in terms of our project timeline, we do feel that we will be evaluating this for a couple years. It takes a while for projects to come online. But in 2018, we will be finishing most of the evaluation period, and then if the project does go forward, if the board decides to approve this project, then we would go into the permitting, design, and construction with the goal of bringing water on in 2022, so that then we could be running the plant, injecting water, so that we can replenish the basin by 2040. This is the time, we will have many opportunities for the public to comment on the project, but this is our very first one. What we'd like to hear from people are the kind of issues that they want to address so that we can incorporate them in the EIR. And that concludes our presentation. If there's any questions, I just wanted to kind of end and acknowledge what Jacque was saying about, you know, kind of making your mark and making a thing. That's how I feel about water supply here in the area, especially, I think, you know, I was really proud to come and see my son with his artwork, and then it also just kind of makes me proud that we're trying to work on solutions for this generation, so.
Great. Thanks for that presentation, Melanie. Any questions? Jacque?
So thanks for the presentation, both. So that, since we're an overdrafted district as designated by the state of California, you've described the hammer that will descend if we don't try to mitigate this problem. Are there any benefits or help from the state of California, expertise or money? Can we expect anything along that line?
Yes, we're always trying to chase the money. So in terms of the, we have gotten funding for our GSA, which is our Groundwater Sustainability Agency Formation. There is some Prop One money for groundwater sustainability plan development. There's also Prop One money that we're actively trying to get right now for groundwater quality. Seawater intrusion is a criteria that they are now permitting under the Prop One groundwater quality. So we have applied for the two and a half million dollar grant, and just this week, we got two letters, one from Assemblymember Stone, and one from Senator Monning's office to support our efforts in getting grant money. In terms of other kind of carrots that they will be dangling in front of us to meet the deadline of 2040 sustainability, we are constantly looking. But right now, it wasn't a really huge funded mandate, unfortunately.
Michael, yes, Bruce, or either of you actually. Are there any large users in your district that you can call upon to use purified water, not unlike the Scotts Valley-Pasttempo partnership that's taking place right now?
There are a few. For example, the famous Blue Ball Park is one of our customers, and we've definitely talked to them from time to time about, you know, their water use and how we can work with them. We will do some of that, but you know, the main idea here is to take this pure water, which is essentially like distilled water. It's very pure stuff. It's even purer than what we have in the ground now. We've done comparisons of what other systems are producing in our groundwater, and it's equal or better than our groundwater. And so that's the main idea, is to take the pure water and inject it and basically create a barrier against the saltwater intrusion and restore our basin back up to safe levels that it was in, you know, before.
We totally got that message. I was looking, if you're looking to other areas to directly replace potable water with something that is certainly potable, just not socially acceptable yet.
We could use some of this water for irrigation approaches. That's the main area where we've used it. You can't, you can't directly drink it, even though it passes all drinking water laws, but you can use it for irrigation.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I'll just add one other thing. In terms of the EIR, we, while we're looking at conveying secondary effluent from the wastewater treatment plant, which is not Title 22 compliant for non-potable irrigation use, there is a component in the environmental impact report where we'll be looking at, could we do tertiary down at the wastewater treatment facility and then pipe tertiary water, and that water would be used for irrigation?
Do you have any, would you need a site in which to build one of these purification plants?
We do, and we already have one. Right next to the district. We bought a fairly large parcel that is plenty big for, you know, running this, so.
But you have to get the treated water there so that you can turn it into the water that you inject, and then transport that water to the injection sites?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So it would come all the way from the city's wastewater treatment plant, presumably, to the district offices, where we would then turn it into this purified water, and then it would go out to injection sites, of which we're looking at two, maybe three sites for that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
The other option would be that, you know, if we didn't get water from the city of Santa Cruz, we would get raw wastewater that we would get and pull from the SoCal pump station by CVS in Nob Hill.
Isn't it true that Aquifer's are actually a river that runs into the ocean, the coastal ones? So how do we know how much we have to inject in there before, the amount of loss could be very significant before you were able to replenish it in the Aquifer?
That is true. In fact, Scotts Valley has done a water model, as you mentioned, we're doing a water model, which will show us exactly that thing. But, you know, the same kind of processes that worked in getting into this problem, taking twenty-four thousand acre feet out caused the deficit we see now, and putting twenty-four thousand back in will basically go backwards. This is a reversible process, so we feel pretty certain that that's the case. Though you're right, a good chunk of what we put in is not going to stay there. As the water levels go up, the amount of water flowing to the ocean is going to increase. And same thing happened to Scotts Valley with our model. They were putting in twelve thousand acre feet, and they would end up with six thousand at the end of the process in the basin. The other six thousand would be flowing out to local streams.
How do you get the water, Bruce, from Nereus Lagoon over to recharge areas along our coastline? How do you get it here?
Well, one of the ideas we're looking at is running along the rail line. And, you know, there are certainly sewage lines and water lines all over this county, and so this would be just another line running, it could run through streets, it could, the simplest in terms of many ways is to run along the rail line, because that then is, you know, disrupting communities as much.
Certainly, the railroad corridor goes in the right direction. The problem is, is that you have to use something soon because they're already making improvements along that line that would have to be torn out to put them in.
Well, we've already started our EIR this summer. It'll, the document will be out next year, and so we will hopefully finish up the first quarter, then the year following, and then we're ready to get going on things, so.
Is this a total absolute solution, or is this a guess solution?
I think it's an absolute solution.
Absolute?
Yes.
So should we not be taking another alternative out there? Shouldn't we now be... So should we not be taking another alternative out there? Shouldn't we now be actually connecting districts or actually combining districts with Santa Cruz water?
Well, that's one of the things we need, we talked about this agency we formed to fix the entire basin, not just the district. And we haven't got a solution that we all agreed to yet, but one solution is to basically beef up our project somewhat to fix not only our problem, but the city's problem, Central Water District's problem, all the private wells up in the foothills problem. It's a basin that all of us share, so one idea is to have one project that solves everybody's problem versus a project that solves our problem, and the city has a project that solves their part of the problem, and Central has a project that solves theirs. That's another possibility, but that hasn't been resolved yet, but.
I think we should have all those doors open. I mean, we should be looking at those things.
They are all open, and the agency.
We can't wait another 30 years for someone to provide us with water.
I agree. And in fact, with the state thing, we have to have a solution that starts in 2020.
This isn't a political discussion, but you walked into a political arena. And so here's a question. Does SoCal Creek at this point have a water moor trial for new cups?
No, we don't have one.
It does not?
No. We are, we are holding, since 2003, we've had a water demand offset, which basically means that new development isn't making the situation worse, and we've been successful with that so far. But we've run out of offsets. We originally did that with replacing toilets. Take a five gallon, three and a half gallon toilet, replace it, and you can do a number of those and basically offset what the home or business is going to use. We started off with something like 85% of our toilets, either five or three and a half. It's down below 5% now. So finding a big toilet is really hard to do. We've come up, we think with a solution that we're going to hear Tuesday night, if you come here, you'll hear this, and it'll be a public hearing on this, and we may actually approve it. We've been having meetings with the community and discussions at the board and staff, and, you know, we think we're getting close to a solution, but it's been a difficult process, I agree, but we're only holding them up until we have something we know can work.
Thank you for your time.
I understand Watsonville is doing water injection into their wells, and it's working. It is holding off saltwater intrusion. It is helping with that.
Right, yes.
So that's very exciting. Have you replaced all the toilets at Cabrillo College and all the schools? All the little elementary schools, all the middle schools, all the high schools?
We did a program, just, we started last year, I think, to replace all the school toilets, and I think all of them agreed to do that, didn't they? Yes, so all the schools have been done for free.
And Cabrillo College?
Well, we did allow, so many of the development things, as I say, have already been used up. So I know that Cabrillo got done, in fact, the sports field there got replaced with artificial turf, and that was an offset. So a lot of things have been done.
Jacque, you have a question?
People talk about subsidence due to overdraft. Do we have any other indications of overdraft subsidence and saltwater intrusion in this Aquifer?
Well, the simplest is the groundwater levels.
The groundwater? So is that at effect on the groundwater height, you know, is there subsidence? Is that noticed? We haven't been able to measure that.
Well, if you're inland and you pump water out of your groundwater basin, indeed, it can cause the land surface to go down, subside, as it's called.
We see that in the valley, like San Marquinhos stuff.
Yes, exactly.
But here, we haven't seen anything like that.
Well, you'll never see it here, because as we suck water out, it gets filled in with saltwater coming in.
Okay, so it's a balance there?
Yes.
Okay.
So you go down a few feet, you get some saltwater in, comes back up again.
So it's still balanced, okay.
Yes, and that's the problem with us, with saltwater.
So with climate action, so we see that accelerating? Can we, so the water supply is lessening, have a similar outflow because of our pumping perhaps? So have we seen an acceleration of the drop in water level in various wells?
We haven't, and partly for the conservation. I mean, when the governor, if you look at, I have a diagram which shows, you know, we've been stepping down from, we were something where around 6,000 acre feet pumping per year, which was over the sustainable yield, and we're down now, you know, below 3,500. So, you know, over, that's something that the board has been doing, is really prioritizing people to get more efficient and people to use their water more wisely, and they have responded. They have responded greatly. So that has helped. It's mean that, you know, intrusion has slowed down because we're pulling less out of the ground, you know, the deficit's a lot smaller.
Who has water rights to SoCal Creek?
Certainly, all the residents that live up and down the creek have water rights, riparian rights, as they're called. I know the state retains some rights. The district actually owns some property up the east branch of SoCal Creek, so as a riparian piece of property, we have rights to riparian water. Riparian water, though, can only be used on-site, so we couldn't bring it down here. We'd have to apply for a new water right.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Melanie and Bruce, for that presentation.
Can I just add one thing?
Absolutely.
I'm probably talking way over our time, but I did just want to recognize Councilmember Norton's comment about, you know, regional and more than one option. Again, you know, the surface water transfer project, we're very actively working with the city on. We do see that, you know, long-term, we likely will have some sort of water transfer coming in, conjunctive use, in lieu, recharge, that would complement our groundwater replenishment project. That's why we're spending, we have a couple of staff people working on that pilot project right now, as we are concurrently evaluating the pure water SoCal project.
Do you have a timeline, do you think, at all for a possible agreement in Santa Cruz?
It's, again, that's their responsibility. We can't push them. That's their project, and they've said they want, what they had done was come up with a schedule, said they would go off and spend three years studying that project.
An intertwined project with the San Lorenzo River?
Yes.
Why does it take three years to study that?
I don't know. I don't know the details. All I know is that's, that is the schedule we saw.
It's a presentation. Thank you for that presentation. Okay, appreciate that. Is there anyone from the, yeah, I'm going to wait for the attendants to clear. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment on this proposal? Come on up.
Hi. So my name is Erica Snovitch, and I have the honor of representing the Sierra Club on the Santa Cruz Water Supply Advisory Committee. And so I really want to communicate a little bit about the in lieu option, and that essentially is basically us wanting to share our excess water with you. It's really about sharing, because ultimately, we are all in the same problem together. And so I just really want to make sure that stays on the forefront of your council's minds as a piece of the solution. I don't, I don't want to say that I have any full understanding of Capitola's water issues. I understand Santa Cruz's issues a bit more, and so I understand how there's multiple projects being put forth. And again, I just really want to stress that the in lieu project is a solid proposal from our end. We want to, we have excess water, we want to share it. There are, I understand there's been testing about just as far as chemicals, you know, potential chemical stuff between the district's water and whatnot. That's part of what's taking some time. The other thing to say is the pure water project, I just urge some caution with that, because the realities are that we don't have the same pollutants that we did 100 years ago. Pharmaceuticals and other pollutants simply are much more difficult to understand and test nowadays. So again, I just urge some caution with that and make sure that you guys go through a full due process. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Hi, I hope it's okay for me to speak again.
Absolutely. This is your time to comment.
Thank you. I've put a lot of research into this, and I hope to share it. Santa Cruz uses 7% of the water in the San Lorenzo River. As a county, we use 6% of our streams. SoCal Creek Water District uses an amount of water, their entire demand corresponds to 4% of the average flow in the San Lorenzo River. Lock refer, the preferred program from the Water Supply Advisory Committee subset, which they call Element One, which means their first choice, compares very favorably with Element Three, which is the sewage recycling. It, 10 times better deal, price, 10 times more water for the money. Literally, it's more than twice the water, and it's limited only because it can supply the entire demand of SoCal Creek Water District. If SoCal Creek Water District's demand were higher, Aquifer could fill that demand as well. Turns out, the existing treatment plant at Graham Hill has almost twice the capacity of what Santa Cruz did in its peak, Santa Cruz used in its peak last summer. That's 16 MGD, and they only use 8.7 at the peak. SoCal needs about four or five MGD. So that plant can serve four water districts at once. What we need is fatter pipes in existing right-of-ways, where there's already pipes, and a well at Felton to take water out of the river in the first place and put it in La Cumbre, so that it can be held there all year and distributed from there all year, not just in the winter. So what I would like to invite the water district to do is ask the city, what does it take, in terms of how much cash to put on the table or any other cooperation, for the city to, by date certain, implement lock refer? Now, there's some very responsible water officials, who I guess I won't name, but people who are really up there, really in the know, say Santa Cruz could be moving a lot faster. After all, they're already serving treated river water to Livoke, and they have been for 20 years, and this is no different. It's the same aquifer under Livoke as is under SoCal Aptos and Capitola. And so as far as switching from well water to city water, back and forth, either seasonally or on a permanent basis, that's not a new thing. That's something that should start this winter and ramp up with the widening of those two pipes and putting in the well. This thing should be gone in two years, in my opinion. Maybe three, if the water rights turns out to be a little bit more of a tough thing. They need to be filed for jointly, that all the agencies, perhaps including your city council and the county, need to get together in a business meeting and say, here's the configuration of water rights. We file jointly. That way, there's no detractors when they apply to the state.
You're going to need to start wrapping up, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So SoCal needs to say, would you take our $27 million or our grant money that we're going to get, and take that and deliver lock refer by date certain, and their entire demand will be taken care of at one tenth the cost, one tenth. They'll save $10,000 per family. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. Appreciate that. Hi, Bob.
Hi, how you doing? Yeah, after the defeat of the D-SAL concept there in Santa Cruz by Santa Cruz voters, it was very disappointing. And I actually jumped into this at that time, trying to look at other sources. I spent some time with Melanie, I don't know if she remembers. But I had some questions towards the SoCal Creek Water people. One is, in my own little investigation on water, I noticed there's a number of firms around the world that have small, even floating D-SAL units, and they're very effective. I mean, they're built in Japan and Saudi Arabia. They're, they're cost-effective, they're inexpensive, and I've never heard that being brought up for this location. Now, it's not going to solve the problems of the whole county, it's not going to solve the problems of the city, but for a major user like a motel, hotel along the coast, maybe the boardwalk is ideal. Now, I don't know how that would play in with the Coastal Commission, but these are being used and manufactured like crazy, and there's a lot of manufacturers, a lot of technology out there. Just on a local basis, I also was proposing to offer to the people of Capitola some kind of incentive to buy instant hot water recirculating devices. These are costing about $120. They can be installed for about $30 or $40. What this does is when you turn the hot water on in your shower, you don't have to wait. It's there. So there's thousands of gallons that go by, and this has been proven, thousands of gallons of water that go by from a community, it's wasted, it's gone. And I think that's a simple, little device that could be utilized and somehow given, people could be given the incentive to buy one. I made the suggestion to the water district, for heaven's sakes, put one in your little lobby there, so people could see what it is. But neither here nor there. So that's, that's basically what I had to say. I'd like to see them look more into these miniature D-SAL units that could provide really good water to coastal. We're on the, the big thing is, we're on the coast. We're not in Fresno, we're not on Bakersfield. We have a ton of water to tap into. I mean, it's right there. It's just a matter of finding the technology to convert it to usable water. You know, it's being done all over the place, all over the world it's being done. Why, what the situation here is, I really don't know. Back to the voting in Santa Cruz against the D-SAL project, I read that, you know, these guys were talking about, well, not enough investigation into alternative techniques or technology has been done. And I thought, boy, that's really ultra-green thinking, but, you know, when I read this, heard the presentation today, I think maybe they're right. Maybe there hasn't been enough looking into some of the alternative technology. But, so, that's about all I have to say.
Thanks for those comments, Bob. Anyone else like to address us on the water presentation? Okay, I'll bring it back for discussion. Did we just receive an update on this? Any other comments? We received the update. Great. Okay, move on to consider an appointment of Knoll and Tam Architects for the Capitola Branch Library and authorize the city manager to negotiate a final contract for the library. Mr. Jesper, is this yours?
Yes, it is. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're excited to be here tonight to take the next step in Capitola's new library building. Tonight, we are recommending that, after a selection process, we award a contract to Knoll and Tam Architects to be the architect and lead us into a new project. Really quickly, going through the selection process, six firms responded to the request for qualifications that the city issued. Those responses were reviewed, and three top firms were then interviewed by a selection panel, and the top recommended firm from that selection interview was Knoll and Tam. Representatives here will be introducing themselves, so I'm going to kind of cover some of the other basics as we go through this. The contract we're recommending is for a basic services contract. The scope of work was included in the packet. The terms and the value, the final value of the contract are still being finalized. We're really close, and we anticipate we can have a full agreement within the next 10 days. The contract amount is what we're recommending is you authorize the city manager to finalize the terms of the contract with an amount that will not exceed $800,000. Just to put this in perspective, the project budget is about $10.6 million in total, with the construction estimate at $7 million. Now, I realize the $800,000 price tag is significantly larger than most of our design contracts, so I did prepare a slide and a sheet I handed out earlier before the meeting, gives us some examples, so I'll run through this. For our public work contracts, for a typical city project, a road project, park project, all that, typically, we're in the 10% to 20% range of the construction cost for the design costs. You're in that range, depending on a smaller project, you're upwards of the 20% typically, and larger projects, you're getting closer to the 10%. The budget for the library project, which was put together as part of the Measure S campaign, estimated the architect fees at 11% of the $7 million construction budget. The sheet that I handed out has quite a few projects on them. I just pulled four of them off here and put the basic numbers here. The Los Gatos Library, which is a $14 million construction project, you can see the architectural and engineering fees were $1.7 million and came in at about 12.6%. Scotts Valley, which was not a new building, it was strictly a remodel of the old skating rink up in Scotts Valley. That was a $2.6 million project with a $408,000 architectural fee. So you can see, because it was smaller, they were up in the 15%, 15 and a half percent range. a half percent range. Pearl Avenue in San Jose, Willow Glen in San Jose, these are projects that are about the size of ours, thirteen thousand square feet, both around seven million, six to seven million dollars. You can see both their percentages are fourteen, eleven to fourteen percent. So I think the, what we're aiming for is about a, you know, eleven percent of a seven million, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollar to eight hundred thousand dollars. We've asked for the upper cap at this point, so we have the final figure. And like I said, I hope to, we hope to get that cleared up and have them moving very quickly on the project. So with that, I'd like to introduce Chris Noel and Abe Jason from Noel and Tam, who are gonna introduce themselves here. Chris?
Thank you very much, Steve, and good evening, members of the council. Chris Noel with Noel and Tam Architects and Abe Jason is sitting back there next to David Tanza. I would like to tell you a little bit about Noel and Tam, very briefly, so I'll go through it pretty quickly, but happy to answer any questions along the way. Noel and Tam, we're located in Berkeley, we've been in business for about twenty-four years, have thirty-two people, and we specialize in public sector projects, all kinds of buildings for communities, higher education, a variety of projects, but a real specialization in libraries. We've designed and planned over forty libraries in California in the last twenty-four years and we love libraries and we really love to do them. So we have a few, I'll just show you a few pictures of our libraries here, and the first one would be our Los Gatos Library, which was finished a few years ago. And it's about thirty thousand square foot, two-story library situated in the civic center, takes advantage of kind of its site sort of tucked into the back, sort of against the hillside, but sort of utilizing the outdoor spaces, having an interior that's full of light and sort of sense of spaciousness and use of materials that are both kind of modern but also warm and incorporating artwork as possible. Special sort of attention paid to children's areas and our teen area on the second floor is really our kind of wonderful spaces. And so, anyway, we have a lot of delight, I think, in our libraries and we try to maximize that. This is our Castro Valley Library. It's a little over thirty thousand square feet and for Alameda County, and it's a sort of, sort of very simple form of a building. You know, they had some real budget issues with this when we inherited the project budget and we had to sort of really economize very tightly. So what we ended up with is a very simple form, very simple structure, everything is doing double, triple duty, but also sort of giving a sense of space. And again, natural light is a very high priority, making sure that we have plenty of that in our libraries. And you can see, you know, bringing people to the light of the windows is, sort of makes it a really lovely place. Valley High Library in Sacramento was one of the branches, they had a branch expansion program a few years ago and we did one of them. It's about a twenty thousand square foot library. Again, sort of paying special attention to its, you know, its location. We use tilt-up construction because that was a very economical way of building in Sacramento. Insulated tilt-up panels give us tremendous energy performance, but also allows us to kind of sort of have a lot of openness and light and again, special use for our teen areas. And you can kind of see the sort of the diagram of the building is kind of how the building functions, but it's very clear and open, which is another principle in libraries that we try to pay a lot of attention to. A smaller branch in San Francisco, the Portola Branch, in a residential neighborhood, so much smaller scale, and, but again, having kind of really sort of nice interior spaces, bringing in natural light as much as we can, and again, very economical use of materials and also sort of paying attention to the children's spaces and making, you know, sort of lovely place for children to be. Morgan Hill Library, one of Santa Clara County's libraries, again, very, kind of, it's about a twenty-eight thousand square foot branch and kind of lots of open spaces inside, again, sort of always, again, focusing on natural light. Marina, just south of here, just north of Monterey. This is the, both the county library headquarters as well as one of their branch libraries. Again, using materials that are kind of, in a design style that kind of really suited them there, sort of this is, you know, using sort of, you know, materials that'll withstand the coastal environment, a lot of copper in terms of our metals, but sort of tile roof and stucco materials, but also inside sort of looking at sort of having a very warm and kind of comfortable feeling for them and they really love it. And then Roner Park Library, one of our earlier libraries, again, sort of finding something that works in Sonoma County, kind of has a kind of a barn-like feeling on the inside. And then sort of just up the road in Half Moon Bay, we are now just going out to bid on this library, a new library for them. This one had a very sort of, sort of, let's say, energetic community process and we managed to shepherd it through and come up with a design that doesn't look like anything in Half Moon Bay, but they say it fits really well for them. It uses, you know, kind of materials of all weather naturally, sort of natural woods, stone and zinc and other materials that aren't gonna need maintenance over years. It's something that really works and these are, these kind of principles are something that we would bring to our thought process here. And then this, where it was this afternoon for our topping out ceremony of our Hayward Library, it's a new central city library, just put the top steel beam on today. It's sixty thousand square feet and it's really, this one probably embodies more of the, you know, sort of the ideas that are currently coming out in library design and function with a lot of community spaces and community functions and it's really kind of top of the, sort of top of the line. And it also, like all of our libraries, is very energy efficient, but this one is a net zero energy building, as is Half Moon Bay going to be, with a central atrium bringing in natural light, which is one of those principles, but also super efficient building, including a lot of water conservation techniques where we're utilizing the old library's basement as a new water cistern to irrigate and flush toilets in our building. So environmental issues and sustainability is very top priority for us and would bring those thoughts here to you. So I think what you can see from these is there's a wide variety of design issues. I think we always bring, come in with an open mind and I think our first step here is to sort of work with the community, find the, you know, what's gonna work well here and find a solution that works for you and will very likely not look like anything else we've ever done because we don't repeat ourselves. So, thank you very much.
Great, thanks for that presentation. Any questions? Yes?
Thanks for joining us, Chris. Architecture should be a reflection of the people who live and use the building. I'm hoping you're planning on spending some time in this community where you can actually get that feeling of this community before you start any design process. We've actually been through a design process in the past that was well participated in. Have you seen those drawings before?
Yes, we have. We've been following that process pretty carefully, actually over the years, and so we have been paying attention. I think we would draw upon the history of the project as we moved into it, but also we are planning to conduct a number of community meetings to basically listen to more feedback and, you know, show, have some back and forth with the community as we come up with ideas.
That's good. And what I've seen in your architecture and your pictures, you lean kind of towards contemporary or modern structures. Is that, is that your forte or is that?
We do what feels right in the moment and in the community and the place where we're building. I think you can see Marina was not terribly modern and that was right for that community. Los Gatos, sort of surprisingly, had a very strong penchant for wanting a modern building. You know, there are a few people in the community that wanted to do a, you know, a mission style or a Victorian building, but our sort of philosophy about libraries is they are the places of the future and we want to feel that we're sort of representing that sense of sort of modernity and looking forward and we do that in a way that both sort of does that, but also keeps them feeling warm, comfortable and welcoming to people.
You do have a good feel of what this community is asking for. So can I ask you, can you, can you design us a building we can build for seven million dollars?
The budget is an issue for us right now. I think a building of the size we're talking about for seven million dollars, I think is gonna be very tough to achieve that and we're looking for ways to, you know, work with the budget to see how we can work within that budget to allocate sort of the money within the budget toward, you know, even a little bit more dollars per square foot so we don't end up with a building that's just so stripped down that it doesn't represent the values that you are looking for.
Are we gonna be all the way to construction documents before we know what kind of costs we're up against or can we find out what we have opportunity to see, your estimate cost-wise, before we get to that point?
Our first phase of schematic design and we feel that during, over the course of the schematic design phases where we will fully define both the scope and project budget and the design concept. And so by the time we get to the end of that, you'll have all three of those things, you know, very clear and then we will have public input at that point, but also I guess maybe we'll be back here to see you.
Thank you.
Possibly.
Any questions? John?
Just as a statement, I've been in the Marina Library. It's fabulous.
Oh, absolutely fabulous.
Ambeig has their meetings there and it's just a gorgeous building, the inside and outside. They did a nice job with the landscape, the drought tolerant landscaping too.
It all died off at one point, but it's coming back.
John, go ahead.
Yeah, so seven million, gonna be stretched, maybe a little bit hard. So what are some of the aspects from your perspective that makes a library attractive and a place that children would like to go to, the general public, maybe retired folks? You know, different communities, since it is gonna be a library for the whole community, how would you sort of encapsulate some of the issues and the desires of those separate, the three that I just mentioned?
Each of those groups has, you know, somewhat different priorities. I think a sort of the older part of the community wants, sort of has a more traditional approach to what libraries are and they want a quiet place to read generally and we find that, so we try to provide a place within the library that sort of supplies that kind of atmosphere and quality where the noise levels are lower because libraries are no longer the places where, you know, the librarians are shushing you. They're sort of actually leading large groups through and doing presentations and there's a lot of noise. So we try to find a place for, say, some of the older patrons like that. For the children, we wanna have places that are really delightful, places that they think are really fun to come into and you could see sort of in the Los Gatos and some of the other ones, you could see some examples of how we sort of pay some real special attention to those children's areas. Teens are another group that we put a lot of focus on. We find that their input to the design process is really helpful. You know, they're the ones who are looking to the future and we try to involve them and create spaces that are relevant and sort of to what it is that they're interested in coming into the library. And then we have to sort of turn all that into kind of a functioning library for the staff who have to actually run it, which means, you know, sort of uninterrupted open spaces and sort of trying to then, within that, sort of bringing natural light in and view corridors so that they can see what's going on without not having to have a whole lot of staff and, you know, wanting to have a place that is easy for them to run. So I'm sort of rambling on, I'm trying to know if I've touched all the points.
Concepts are what I'm looking for.
Yeah, there's a lot of issues around acoustics in libraries, so as soon as we sort of try to have uninterrupted open spaces that mean that the library can be reconfigured relatively easily over time, you know, is a very important principle, but it also means that noise can transmit and so we need to control it. So those big open ceilings that you saw in Valley High and in Castro Valley, you know, they're big metal decks and so they're perforated with acoustical material behind them, so they become a sound absorbent surface as well as the surface that reflects the light, the natural light and spreads it through it, and it's also the structural element of the building. So we've got lots of techniques we've developed over time. The floors of the library, you know, are often something we pay attention to, you know, how do we keep that as flexible so that if you move some tables and chairs around, will you still be able to plug electric, you know, plug in to power and things like that? So flexibility is really, is really key. And simplicity of the sort of the form and structure of the building is also an economy that we are looking for. I know we are, you know, looking at the budget and trying to get the most out of it we can, so simplifying the form is one way that we have that will get us more bang for our buck. And so the design that came out of the last round of conceptual is a very complicated design that we right away sort of focused on and said, this is not an economical design. We need to simplify and, you know, relook at this so that we can stretch the budget because you couldn't possibly afford that for the seven million dollar budget.
We have a children's play area that has been pretty much a focus for many people in Capitola. Are you thinking, or can you think in terms of sort of merging that in some way with the area in the library where the, you know, maybe off of the children's playground or some, I mean, some way?
Absolutely. I mean, I think that's a resource that exists and doesn't, I think we don't really wanna change too much. And I think that where we locate the children's area in the new library, we'll probably relate to that pretty closely so that there might be, there might not be direct sort of, you know, sort of circulation between the two because, you know, you wanna let the children, you know, come in and out the main door and have, you know, security there, but they can look out on it and relate to it and it might be something that would make it attractive for them. They're in the playground, they can see their children inside, that'll attract them.
Yeah, our library in Boulder Creek has something like that, a children's area near an outdoor area, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
Cool. And we have weather here.
We do?
It's gonna be a lot.
Good weather.
Yeah, it's really good weather, but a lot of rain and storms too, so.
Yeah.
The more, the better, right? Michael? Great, thank you for that presentation.
You're welcome.
Is there, is there anyone from the public that would like to come up and respond to the presentation? Hi, Bob.
Hi, Bob Edgarin again. Okay, before I start on my little thing, I just wanna point something out. If you looked at all those photographs, with the exception of maybe one or two, all those designs had a second story. The presentation we discussed about our library was definitely a single story, so just kind of plant that little thought in your head. Why, why can some communities have a second story and suddenly we can't? But, okay, I'm gonna start on my little essay here. This is a proposal to build a new Capitola Library on Capitola Avenue or other locations instead of the selected current location. This is a request to create a task force to find another location for the new library. Overview: Capitola is about to make a decision that will affect it for decades and will be detrimental for future projects it needs. As Capitola Village moves into an area of hopefully less traffic, less vehicle village traffic, additional parking will be needed to offset current village parking per the Coastal Commission requirements. There are no existing large parcels in Capitola owned by the city to provide these extra parking spaces except the current library location parcel. Utilizing this parcel as parking would be significant, significantly less money than building a second story parking lot on Pacific Cove. I don't believe the people of Capitola were fully aware of the downside in this vote or the selection for the new library. This parcel, the current library location, will determine many of the future feasible uses for Capitola. For instance, this parcel could be used for a future location of City Hall and/or Police Department. These uses were discussed in the original acquisition of the property. There is also the need for future development of the Rissman Mansion. By building a new library, the future of the Rissman may be seriously limited. This parcel can be considered for a boutique hotel as well. This use would address and help solve the tourist hotel shortage and generate T O T tax. Nevertheless, the highest and best use would not be for a library. The property location and size should be saved for other uses, perhaps even unknown at this time. If this parcel is used for a library, it will tie the hands of Capitola and their taxpayers for future needs. Capitola would be sacrificing a very precious land area that only small, a small percentage of citizens use and other citizens from the county, not Capitola. I can almost guarantee in ten years' time, we will be saying, what were we thinking? Public access: The current library location is located at a hazardous intersection, very unfriendly to pedestrians, older people, children, et cetera. The entry and exit for the vehicle traffic presents challenges as there is a blind curve approaching Wharf Road, Claire's intersection from the north. Intensification of the current library site by tripling the size will create more traffic on Forty First Avenue, Claire's, Wharf Road, SoCal Creek, SoCal Avenue, Capitol Road, Forty Ninth. Looking at some options, in contrast, the location on Capitola Avenue below.
Go ahead and wrap up.
Okay, has easy access from SoCal Avenue, but that's Caress Day Spa located at nine eleven Capitola Avenue. You have my notes on all these. The other suggestions would be the Monterey Park. Instead of a, instead of a skate park, we'd be gaining a library. I don't know if the trade-off seems to make sense there for me.
Okay, Bob, thanks for the comments.
Sure. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the point?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Barbara Gorson. I'm a member of the Capitola Library Advisory Committee and I sat on the interview panel for the top three finalists in the architecture selection. And Chris Noel has already gone over a couple of the points I was gonna make about the highlights of their work, but the one thing that I didn't see mentioned by him that would be on my list is their really great use of art incorporated right into the architecture of the building. So for example, a ceiling. So for example, a ceiling that is a piece of art, or a glass wall that has art etched into it. And that was certainly in the Los Gatos Library, which I've seen, but also in looking at images of other libraries that they have built. So that was something that didn't come, come out in the slideshow he just gave. I would, I would like to say that we, all three of the architecture firms were highly qualified, and it took our panel a lot of discussion, talking about pros and cons of each, talking about priorities and criteria. And in the end, we all agreed to recommend Knoll &amp; Tam. So that was, for me, anyway, that was a relief that we had everybody on the same page there. And, and so I would urge you to approve the contract with Knoll &amp; Tam. But I would also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge and thank all the work that Anderson Brule has done for us up to now. We could not have been where we are today without their information, their advice, their conceptual drawings to help us pass, pass Measure S, and many other things. So I think we owe them a big, big thank you for that. Thank you.
Well said, Barbara. Thank you.
Hi, Gail.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. I'm Gail Ortiz. I've been working on the library project for a few years now, and I want to hearken back to the agreement that we have with the county to build this library, and the amount of work that's gone on to find, to decide to keep it where it is today, the reasons why we decided to. But I first want to say that if we decide, if we think about changing the location at this point, the timeline that we've got for this contract with the county, which is really important, is going to get held up. And I would hate to see that happen, because we could lose some money if we do that. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that. There's many reasons why we, the community decided to keep the library where it is today. And one of them was because it is used by a number of people in this county that aren't Capitola residents. But I think it's important for Capitola not to be an island unto itself and to recognize the contributions that it can make in this community that serve the whole county and not just Capitola. We need to be at the forefront of sharing our resources and joining with other communities to make the whole of the county a better place. So I'm really hoping that you'll accept this proposal tonight. The location by 41st Avenue is a good one, because there's a lot of people that use this, there's a good reason why there are a lot of people outside of Capitola that use this library, and that's because they combine trips. When they go to 41st Avenue, they also come to our library. They might order their books online, but they pick them up at our library. And if we're really interested in combining trips in this county and reducing traffic and reducing carbon emissions, these are the kind of things we have to think about in our planning. The other reason it's a good idea to put the, keep the library there is because it does partner with Rispin in a good way. Rispin's going to be a park. We're not sure, you know, I've worked on Rispin for 25 years. We're not sure it's ever going to be anything else, but we know it's going to be a park. Having a park right across the street from a library is a really good thing. I don't see any downside to that. I think those are my points. I really hope that you will consider approving this tonight and moving forward with this, because it's, this is a good architectural team. They're going to serve Capitola well, and we're off and running, hopefully, after tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Gail. Anyone else from the public like to make a comment? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back. Who'd like to?
I had the pleasure of being on the panel as well. I will echo everything that Barbara said, and what finally sort of turned the key for us with Knoll &amp; Tam is not only the fact that the Marina Library really spoke to us. Single-story library, you'd never know it from inside. It's just spacious and beautiful, filled with light, the variety of the designs. But more importantly, it came down to, this is probably, this is the only time we're going to build a library, let's be frank. We want the best possible firm, the most creative firm, the one that will build us a striking library, and Knoll &amp; Tam stood out head and shoulders. And I will move the staff recommendation.
Second?
Any other comments?
I will support the project. I've supported the library since the beginning. And I want to go back in history a little bit and maybe somebody correct me, but Jan Butz was still in office. She was the one that put the requirement for the share of funds for the RDA. That's how this thing got started for funding it. And at that, at the same time, we were in the middle of the Rispin project. So I want to say it's closer to seven year, eight years ago that we really started the movement towards the library. Five years ago, we bought, we brought Pam Boulay in, into the process. I think it's five or six years ago from now. And we asked her to come in, and we also asked her to do a lot of work for the city, which she did for free. She did a lot for free. And then we gained to a time when we had these conceptual drawings, and we paid her for that, but she participated in the community, she was part of it. I respect the, the committee's decision on this thing. I don't argue that at all. I just want to say that this is not how we should do process. There's something wrong here, where we have somebody involved, and then we let them go thinking that, that they probably were doing this, obviously they were doing this because they thought they had a project in line for us. So I think that we owe a lot of appreciation and dedication to Pam Boulay, and we should do something to represent that in some way. And I support the project and the architects. Thank you.
Anderson Brule is still under contract with the city. They still are our city architects, so we have to keep that in mind. They're, they're still near and dear to our hearts.
Any comments?
John?
I like the idea of how you start from concepts that meet needs. I really like the idea that, you know, the constituencies of this community are going to get that thought process, and that's going to be part of the design. I really like that.
Mike, on your comment, this is to approve the recommended action. There is a, also an addition on here to approve the formation of an anna committee and appoint one council member to that committee.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I was going to bring that up. There are, there are three ports to the recommendation.
Right, go ahead.
Authorize the award of contract, authorize city manager to finish the terms and pricing on the contract. And it also involves the formation of an ad hoc library design advisory committee. This is a committee that will be meeting quite frequently. I think we're, every couple, twice a month for a while here as we get through conceptual design going, giving direct input to the architect and our project management team as we move forward. We're proposing that this committee be formed with a, one member from the city council who we asked be appointed tonight. City manager, myself, will be sitting on it. Our consultant project manager, Dave Tanza, will be sitting on it. The library staff will be sitting on it, different members for different parts of the design process that they feel is appropriate. And the library advisory committee will be, also be appointing one member. So they'll be making the quick and simple decisions. Ultimately, the larger, like choosing the conceptual design that we're going to be moving forward with, the site layout, things like that, that'll be coming to the council. This is just kind of keep the project rolling. We can't be coming to the council every time. We need some quick decisions made, so this will be the role of this library design committee. And that will continue through construction. Once we get to construction, I'll be meeting a little less frequently, but there, as we all know, there's always design issues that come up during construction, too. So besides knowing Knoll &amp; Tam, we would like to get your input on this design advisory committee. Thank you.
I didn't want to be so bold as to actually move myself onto that, but I'm available.
I was just going to ask the maker of the motion if he would like to add one name to the list, and I would be fine with him. There we go.
I'd like to suggest making one change to this committee, and that is, I think that the public works director and city manager can work as, as the advisory council on this thing. I think that one position there should be a citizen at large. And maybe you'll get an arch, local architect or someone like that in there with some design experience. Because the public works and city manager could work as, as the staff, staff for the committee.
So Steve, let me go back. What are the, how many positions are you, are you envisioning on this? How many people?
Well, I think, as far as the number of bodies, so the council member, Jamie and myself, Dave Tanza, that's four. Library staff's going to vary, depending what we're doing. They may have one or two people at a meeting. We're not going to limit them to one or, you know, because we're looking at the way the stacks are laying out, or the way the book delivery system's going to work or something. We want their appropriate staff members there, and then one person from the library advisory. So we're looking at seven or eight people.
And are you trying to substitute one, Dennis?
No, I, I can either add one or substitute, I'm just saying that if you needed to keep an uneven number, you could just do a citizen at large.
The library advisory committee member will be the citizen at large.
That committee's already chosen, Mike.
No, I'm saying the person from that library committee will be a citizen.
It's a person that's already chosen. It doesn't leave anyone out from the outside of this, of this group here to step in. I'm just saying one citizen at large could be chosen.
Chances are the citizen at large will step forward from that library advisory committee, but I don't know. I'm just, I'm thinking of names, you know, like Gail Ortiz.
Let me see if there's any discussion. Michael, Stephanie, input, citizen at large, yes, no?
Well, I, I thought that was going to be that person from the library advisory committee. If we want another person, we could, we could add another person at large.
You're okay?
I don't know.
Someone who's followed this for a while?
So very closely. I mean, it would have to be Barbara or, or Gail, or someone.
So you're okay with the citizen being from that committee?
If, or if we want to add another person, so that library advisory committee will have, they will appoint someone, and then if we want to have another person, if there's, Gail's interested, I mean, we could certainly...
But that's what I was suggesting, is that we have a citizen at large that's outside of that committee.
Mr. Mayor, are you trying to limit the size of this committee for functional?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a great entree. I was just going to suggest that, you know, this does need to be a relatively limber group, because there's going to be issues that come up. And so I do think, you know, being cognizant of the size of the committee is an important factor. I don't think you want to make it too big. In addition, just as a reminder, you know, this is the function your public works director plays for you on, on every other city project. Every other city project, there are little design decisions that have to get made, and they get made by the public works director. Occasionally, they'll bump up to my office, and if they're big enough, they'll come back to city council if they're significantly changing. So this is, this is something that we usually do in a pretty streamlined way. We're trying to get more input and have a better decision-making, more robust process. But I want to caution you about making it too big of a process that becomes cumbersome and slows us down.
Adding to this, that we're not inviting any member right now from outside of the public in the, in the circle we're in.
This is like a technical committee, almost.
But on every committee, you know, the public is, anyone from the public is always welcome to come to any meeting. There's a, so, I mean, there's always input that's allowed. I like the fundamental of keeping the committee at a size that people will show up, and they'll participate, and the larger it gets, that does become challenging. Jack, do you have an opinion on public person from the library committee or person at large?
No, that's not the question, Ed.
Do you want to add it?
It's not, it's not either or. It's, it's not either.
You're asking to add another position?
Adding one, another position.
As I said, so a question, my question I asked him was, another person at large? Or would it be, or would the person from the library committee be considered a public person?
Okay.
Explain that.
I like the idea of reaching out to the community, quite frankly. I do understand, I think the advisory group's going to be involved, right? So in addition.
In addition would be your, in addition.
I mean, the library community, the committee could choose their person.
We could, I mean, we could put it out there and, you know, and have another, you know, position open. But this is kind of a technical advisory committee. It's got to be people that know what's going on, and, and not very many people know what's going on out there, so.
I think we'll find that, Stephanie. We would take applications, just like we do for any position, just in the council makes a decision.
Not very many people know about libraries. I mean, we didn't even know much about libraries until we started getting into it. The general public doesn't, you know, it's not that, it's a real specialty, but we could sure try.
It does not preclude someone from the library advisory committee from applying as the at-large citizen member. It does, it could certainly be that, be a person from there, so.
So as the maker of the motion, are you, would you like to amend, not only to include your name as the council appointment, but to add an at-large person?
Sure, if that, if that'll make everyone feel good. You know, chances are, you're going to have to get a bigger room, but sure, throw another person in.
It's your choice to amend your amendment, I'm not...
I'd like to leave it, I can leave it the way the staff...
The discussion right now has it at a tie, and I'm letting you make the final decision.
Let's leave it the way the staff recommended.
So the motion I have from you is to take the recommended action to award the contract to Knoll &amp; Tam, authorize the city manager to negotiate the final scope, to approve the formation of an anna committee of the names that were suggested by the public works director, and to include yourself as the city council designee.
Yes.
And the second was made by...
I'm going to withdraw it. My second.
You got your votes counted wrong, Ed. You got to read this, council. Read the votes.
Let's try it, and then we can have another motion. If not, why don't we take it separately? Let's take it separately. Let's do the, let's do the first two items as my motion, and then we'll take another motion for the advisory council.
Is there a second for him to...
Let the city manager continue the, you know, conclude the contract and award it to Knoll &amp; Tam.
Items one and two, as a substitute motion, which we'll deal first.
Second is fine.
Okay. So on items one and two, to award the contract, Knoll &amp; Tam, authorize the manager to negotiate contract, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On item three?
I'll make the motion that we, we take staff's advice to the makeup of the, of the council board, to the five members that suggested, with a sixth member as being a citizen at large.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Third?
Second. Any other discussion? Is, have we named the council representative in that motion?
You.
You.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Can I make an amendment?
You can ask.
Just for discussion. So how would that member at large be determined?
Advertised.
We'd list it out through Sue and just advertise for it, and bring it back to council with all the applications.
So be a public, public out there.
Yeah.
Sue, can you go and do a roll call on this one, please?
Councilman Norton?
Aye.
Councilman Harland?
Aye.
Councilman Betrand?
Aye.
Councilman Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Bochore?
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Okay.
He wanted to speak, I think.
As a project manager, I could add one little question.
Sure. I don't have an opinion one way or the other about an added person, but can we proceed with the project? We have some workshops, we're trying to get planned. We'd like to get the committee started to do some work, and I'm not sure how long the process will take to advertise and get another person on board.
Carry on. We think it's going to be carry on.
And the simple answer is, is to clarify for David, is that the library advisory committee that we already have, is that's going to be coordinating our public process? This committee is more focused on the design questions as we get into it.
We're not going to hold you up one iota.
Question, Steve.
Sure. So someone can make it to this advisory group, some people may not be able to, but there's no quorum, you're going to proceed.
Yeah, and strictly a technical advisory committee.
I just want to make that sure.
Okay, we're going to move on to the last item. This is an introduction of an ordinance amending chapter 15-04 of the code pertaining to building and fire codes. We are going to get a presentation for our building official.
Brian stuck around all night for us.
Way to go, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Welcome, Brian.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, I'm here to basically introduce an ordinance amending section 1504 of the Capitola Municipal Code. We go through this every three years. ICC, the governing body over basically building codes, produces a new volume every three years as model codes. California then takes those model codes, edits them for about a year, produces the California Codes, which is Title 24, all volumes, and it addresses certain climatic, topographic, and geographic problems or issues we have here in California. Not only seismic, we may not use that in Kansas or things like that, but we do have that here. So our California Building Standards Commission adds own codes for California. So our California Building Standards Commission adds own codes for California. With this, piggybacked on it, is the Central Fire District's ordinance, which was adopted last code cycle. No major changes occur to either of these codes, whether it be Title 24 building codes or the Central Fire Ordinance. In my staff report, I've left, I kind of bulleted the major changes. And then on the ordinance, you could see at the very bottom of the front page, items J, K, and L, and then also a sentence at the very bottom were added to the original or the 2013 ordinance. Reason being, the administrative code and the existing building code, to go along with the historical code, were all left out of the last ordinance. The historical code and the existing building code are hidden in the back of the California Building Code. The existing code is especially important to adopt because the ability, excuse me, California has eliminated chapter 34, which is the existing building code chapter, and has basically put that chapter into, I believe it's Title 8 of, or Part 8 of Title 24, which is now the existing building code in the back of the, of California Building Code. With those new adoptions, I added a line that allows me to use a, use the international codes as basically alternative methods or materials, which would only be used when the California Building Code does not address a specific situation. If you have any, it's staff recommendations that we adopt these codes. It's a standard adoption every three years. You'll be seeing me in another three years when the new California codes come out. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time. We recommend adoption of these codes.
Thanks, Brian. That was very clear. Dennis?
We'll see as time comes along how bad it is.
Yeah, there really isn't any, anything big.
Good for you.
Once again, the biggest thing is the adoption of the existing building code. So we do have an existing building code to go by because we no longer have that chapter in the California Building Code.
Jack?
So you're the guy that knows it in Capitola?
State tells me what I need to know, and I just research it.
Okay, great. And you, I think the city pays for trainings and such, so that you're up to date on these things?
Yes, yes. Pays for not only myself, but my inspector as well.
Okay, thank you.
We have budgeted, a finite amount of budget for trainings.
When someone comes to the counter, you will certainly inform them which building code we are making them adhere to, correct?
Yes, it is. The international code, as written in the ordinance, it is when submitted, reviewed, and approved by the city's a building official. So you will have to come with me or the person following me basically say, I understand that the building code, the California Building Code, the scenario I have is not addressed in said code. It is addressed in the international code. Here's a section. Here's what I would like to use. Here's what I would like to do. And per chapter one of the California Building Code, the alternative methods and materials, I would consider that an alternative method, which by the California Code in itself, I do have the authority to interpret and approve.
Because not all cities adopt the codes as quickly as we are, and so I just want to make sure they know that we are at the 2017.
There will be, and if need be, I could provide any type of public noticing or anything like that, but as we come to the counter, you know as well as anybody.
You have the folks that walk up to you. Sure.
Yeah, I'm as transparent as they come when it comes to building codes and what I look for and what I basically mandate and what the state mandates. I'm just a vehicle for the state, basically. But I'm as transparent as they come. I will tell you, and I'm always accessible. I can phone calls, emails, counter, anything like that. Anyone is always welcome to come and ask me questions.
And our fire sprinkler ordinance is still intact?
Everything is pretty much the exact same. I attach the changes to the Central Fire Ordinance. No major changes from, pretty much everything carries over from what we adopted in the last three years.
Thank you for that concise presentation, Brian. I appreciate it.
What does it go into effect?
It would go into effect January 1 of 2017.
Here's a good test. I'm going to submit an application for a chicken coop, and we'll go through the process and find out what, you know, what are the regulations that have changed from that.
You'll have time to submit that application for a chicken coop.
Depends on how many chickens. Depending on your submittal, you're under the code in which you submitted under. And depending on the size for Capitola local ordinance, it may not require a building permit whatsoever.
It may be too big for a shed in front of the shred counter.
It may be, per the ordinance, 80 square feet is not permitted. It doesn't require to have a permit.
And we know it can't be in the front yard.
That's right. And if you meet certain parameters, you may not even need a building permit.
The total number of animals must not exceed our.
We're digressing. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
We're getting into the silly hour here.
Anyone from the public like to address on? Did you want to make a presentation, or were you just supporting? No, come on up. Absolutely. You guys have been, no, you've been sitting there all night patient. No, please.
Thanks. Mike DeMars on the Fire Marshal of Central Fire District. I think Brian pretty much covered it pretty adeptly there. I think you could probably submit my name for his and fire code for building code, and I think we covered it. But just want to emphasize a couple of points. Actually, I'd like to answer your question in regards to the sprinkler ordinance. It's pretty much the same. It hasn't changed. But the major change in the ordinance in regards to the sprinkler ordinance is we changed some of the language to make it a lot more user-friendly, a lot more understandable. In the past, it was a bit convoluted. We got a lot of complaints about, we don't understand, where does it apply, where does it not apply? I think the new version, it's a lot easier to understand. So that's a major change. The ordinance, I think several of you were here during the adoption of the previous ordinance, is pretty much the same. If you look, I have copies if anybody wants to see. But you'll see a lot of reference to the previous ordinance, and this section carries over, this section carries over, this section carries over. I'd say 90% of the new ordinance is carryover from the previous ordinance. Many of the major changes were, again, language changes. There were a couple of strikeouts. I'll use an example in regards to fireworks. There were some languages that allowed for storage usage of fireworks in this area. As we know, we're a dry county fireworks-wise, so we struck out those items to make it more... I can't think of the word right now. Current. There we go. So there's a few examples there. But it's basically the same ordinance, updated, revised.
We like being on the cutting edge, so that's great.
And again, this is, the ordinance is asking for adoption of the 2015 edition of the fire, International Fire Code with California amendments. And Mr. Termini's question about how do people know which code applies, we're very transparent also. We require when we do a plan review that you stamp on your plans which version of the code you're using to design your plans, and if it's wrong, we'll correct you.
Great. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for hanging in there all night for that presentation. I appreciate it.
Okay.
I'll just make sure, anybody from the public want to address us on this? No, we'll bring it back. Bring it back for a motion and recommendation, discussion. I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second?
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I do have one last note, Sue. I think I skipped over you. You're going to make an announcement on committees that are openings, and I don't know if you want to add the new library one we just created into your announcement, or?
Oh. Put it in my recycle bin.
Up to the minute.
I just wanted to make an announcement that we have opening on the advisory council to the area agency on aging for an alternate representative.